Having arrived, I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Verveer.
Here.
Alder Vidiver.
Present.
Alder Wehelia.
Here.
President Abbas. Not present at the moment. Um, Alder Alboris.
Here.
Alder Benford.
Present.
Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Carter.
Present.
Thank you. Alder Conklin. Oh, I see Alder Conklin there.
Present.
Thank you. Alder Curry.
Here.
Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Figueroa Cole.
Here.
Um, Alder Foster.
Here.
Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Halverson.
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'm present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lerner.
Here.
Vice President Martin.
Here.
Thank you. And Alder Miyazi.
Present.
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, we do have quorum.
Thank you. Um, can we have the meeting instructions, please?
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. All panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Please continue to use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public have registered to speak. The name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. City staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the council may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the council, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just say in opening that we have a very hefty agenda tonight. Um, and so we'll try and work our way through that as expeditiously as possible, but I would invite people to, um, use the minimum number of words necessary to convey your point. Uh, and also to remember, um, that we are all here to do the business of the city, um, and our residents, and, uh, ask folks to, um, be kind, to be civil, and to refrain from using profanity in your remarks. Uh, I'll also just remind the council members that, um, Robert's Rules, um, invites us to address our remarks to the chair and to confine our remarks to matters of policy, uh, rather than speculating about intent, um, or talking about your colleagues. So I'd invite you to, to be guided by Robert's Rules on that. And we will start, um, with our first honoring resolution, um, which is item one, Legisstar 69970, commemorating the 52nd anniversary of Earth Day on April 22nd, 2022, proclaiming, uh, April 23rd, 2022 as Earth Day Challenge Day, and encouraging citizen participation. I might amend that to be resident participation in the cleanup events at City of Madison Parks on that day. I don't believe we have anyone here to receive the resolution, and so unless there's objection, we'll dispense with reading of it, and I would turn to President Abbas for a motion.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item one. We'll note that we do have one registrant in support. Uh, you all should have your, uh, list of registrants in your email. Tracy Dureen, that's all of District Six, not wishing to speak. Is there any discussion? Or is there an, any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item one? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item one. And item two is Legisstar 69639, proclaiming Sunday, April 24th, 2022, as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of Madison. On item two, we do have registrants wishing to speak. We'll start with Barbara Noldner, uh, Kensington Drive, in support, to be followed by Paul Noldner.
Um, hello, this is Barb. Uh, yes, um, I support this item, and I wanted to state that you can make a difference tonight by also supporting item 24 to create a 16-acre conservation nature park, which preserves the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission Environmental Corridor, which is important, uh, for birds, of course, and also to oppose item 21, which builds roads across this corridor. Madison can do its part to create a world that supports, um, our ecosystems and sustains future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next addition is Paul Noldner, also of Kensington in Maple Bluff, uh, in support, to be followed by Beth Sloyes.
Yeah, hello. Um, I have a, an item two festival image in my all Alders email that I sent a little while ago. Is it possible to bring that up?
Uh, Paul, if you hadn't arranged with staff in advance, I don't think that's possible, but it, since you sent it to the council, they can all see it.
Okay, great. And, uh, if they want to refer to their email, it would be a recent item. Um, it was not clear in registering how to ask staff to do that. I know how to do it for Plan Commission, for example, but not this. But anyway, bear with me. Um, thank you very much for supporting and implementing the Bird City goals, including saving urban natural habitat and items that are difficult but well worth doing, like bird-safe glass. Uh, we will be celebrating, uh, the, this achievement, uh, a 10-year anniversary of Madison being a Bird City, with a festival that I helped organize along with, um, Eric Nep at Madison Park asked me to be a liaison with local groups, environmental groups. I was on the Audubon Board at the time, and with, uh, a number of friends' groups around town and, and other environmental groups. We put on a heck of a celebration at Warner Park, uh, for, focused on, uh, families and kids and enjoying nature as part of Earth Week, Arbor Day, and Bird City. So it's kind of a combination. Um, this will be Sunday, April 24th, at Warner Park in the Rainbow Shelter area. And I just want to thank Parks and the City of Madison for your great support for that. The other thing that came out of, one of, of many things that came out of Bird City included Bird and Nature Adventures, who are also going almost to 10 years now, on year-round Bird and Nature Adventures every weekend in at least a couple Madison Parks and natural areas. People really don't have to go out of town to enjoy nature, and, uh, this has been just a wonderful experience with thousands of participants, focused again on families and kids. They're all free. Um, if you go to Madison Parks events, it is the most frequent recreation event on, on the calendar. Nature recreation is huge, and it's well-loved by the Madison community. And it's, the outings, I'm happy to say, are always diverse and, uh, very welcoming. So, um, thank you very much. I, I think, um, I'll leave it at that. I've got further comments about helping save some nature in Madison further on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Sloyes of District 18.
Good evening. Thank you for recognizing the importance of habitat for, uh, migratory birds and celebrating migratory birds. Um, on the north side, we have the Hartmire Wetland Natural Area that is home to, uh, a recurring pair of sandhill cranes that have chosen, of all the places in Madison, to nest and raise colts within that habitat. And as we look forward to the upcoming other agenda items this evening, I want you to know that this reemerging wetland in this post-industrial site does provide incredible habitat for migratory birds, not only the cranes. Um, over 100 birds find this to be, uh, a magnificent place to raise young and to live. Um, the sandhill cranes come back every year. It's part of the phenology of the north side, and, um, we just are excited about celebrating migratory birds, and I'm grateful to the city for their, their bird glass ordinances, their work with Madison Audubon and other nature groups. So I thank you, Mayor, for this. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our registrants on, uh, this item wishing to speak. Uh, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for any of our registrants? Or is there any discussion? Or is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item two. And item three is Legisstar 70307, proclaiming the week of April 24th to April 30th, 2022, as Arbor Week in the City of Madison. On item three, we have one registrant in support not wishing to speak, and I don't believe we have anyone to receive this, so we'll dispense with reading and turn to President Abbas for a motion.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any discussion? Or is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item number three. Uh, at the request of the recipient, we'd like to refer item number four to our next council meeting, so they can be here to accept it. President Abbas?
Move motion to refer to next council meeting.
Moved and seconded to refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item is referred. And that brings us to item five, Legisstar 70468, recognizing April 1st as Black Woman Heal Day in the City of Madison. And I will, uh, turn the virtual podium over to Alder Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will actually be towards the end, so I'd like to turn it over to Alder Harrington McKinney.
Do bring that up. I'm not able to.
Alder Curry, are you able to start us off, then?
I can't. Thank you. Whereas, research shows that one in four black girls in the United States will be sexually assaulted by the age of 18, and...
And whereas, in the United States, 38% of black women experience sexual violence other than rape during the lo- uh, during their lifetime, and...
Whereas, my, many cultural considerations can hinder healing for black women survivors, and...
Whereas, Miss Lelated G developed an unyielding passion to help black girl victims of sexual abuse heal and reclaim their spirits, minds, and bodies from the devastation of abuse, and...
Whereas, Miss McGee, Miss, Miss G founded Black Women Heal, a Madison-based nonprofit that serves as a vehicle to educate, empower, engage, and equip black women and girls in the healing from and the prevention of sexual abuse in their communities, and...
Whereas, Miss G founded Black Woman Heal Day, international movement first recognized in Madison, Wisconsin, on April 1st, 2015, and...
Whereas, Black Woman Heal Day serves to increase awareness, prevention, and healing efforts of sexual abuse throughout the African diaspora, and... Whereas, Ms. G has committed her life to the defending of black girlhood and the healing of black women.
Now...
Now...
Therefore, be it resolved
Be it resolved.
That the Madison Mayor and Madison Common Council recognize April 1st as Black Woman Heal Day in the City of Madison. Be it finally resolved that the Madison Common Council and Mayor deeply thank Ms. G for her advocacy and dedication to the defending and healing of black women and girls.
Thank you all. I think we'll take that as, um, moved by Alder Curry and seconded by Alder Harrington McKinney, if there's no objection. And I believe that we have, uh...
Tameya Smith.
Tameya Smith is here. I'm just looking in the list to receive this. I don't know if, um, Lelated G is here. But Tameya, did you want to say a few words?
Yes. Um, good nee- good evening, everyone. My name is Tameya Smith. I serve as the spokesperson for Miss Lelated G in defending, um, black girlhood. We deeply thank our Alder J.L. Curry in the City of Madison for this great honor and reconno- recognition of Black Women Heal Day. Black Women Heal Day was started in April 1st, 2015 by Ms. Lelated G with the hope and the vision to create time and space for black women to heal from the historical impact of sexual abuse. Ms. G regrets that she cannot join us tonight. She is currently in the Caribbean, supporting two black women-led organizations and programs that support the hea- healing and empowerment of black girls and women in the honor of the 8th Annual Black Women Heal Day. We are thankful to the City of Madison's validate of this work that must be done to defend black girls, heal black women, and strengthen, strengthen the black family and overall Madison community. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here with us. Um, discussion, Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, I do apologize because, um, I could not bring my screen up, but I want to speak into this space of the work that, uh, Lelated G has done in this community. I myself, um, uh, have been healed from sexual abuse as a child, and I know that that lingers deep, it cuts wide, and it stays. And her work to heal young girls who have experienced that is tremendous. And so I would like to acknowledge and join my sisters in recognizing the work that she has done. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Alder. If there's no further discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number five. And we'll move on to item number six, which is Legisstar 70580, commending Fire Chief Stephen A. Davis on his retirement from the City of Madison after over 32 years of service. And for this, I believe I will turn it over to Vice President Martin.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe, uh, President Abbas is going to read the first half, and then I get the second. So, President and Boss.
Thank you very much. Whereas Fire Chief Stephen A. Davis started with the Madison Fire Department August 21st, 1989, and will retire on April 1st, 2022, after more than 32 years of dedicated service to our community. And whereas, he has served as a firefighter, paramedic, training officer, lieutenant, V and chief, and ultimately appointed Fire Chief on January 2nd, 2012. And whereas, he was the 11th career chief to lead the Madison Fire Department. And whereas, he selected and recommended the hire of 251 members of Madison Fire Department. And whereas, he selected and recommended the promotion of 142 members of Madison Fire Department. And whereas, he directed the greatest growth period in the history of the department, which included the opening of two new fire station and fire administration building, and addition of two engine companies, and additional medic unit, and expanded fire EMS and fire inspection services to the village of Shorewood, town of Blooming Grove, and town of Madison. And whereas, under his leadership, the City of Madison Fire Department achieved the highest possible insurance service organization rating ISO Class 1, a distinction shared by only three other cities in the state, and...
Whereas, he bolstered the city's initiatives to reduce impact on the environment by switching to PFOS-free firefighting phone, foam, adoption of green technology at new and existing fire stations, and putting into service North America's very first, uh, electric municipal fire engine. And whereas, he launched several important programs, including the MFD Peer Support, the Mobile Integrated Health Program, AKA Community Paramedicine, and the Madison Community Alternative Response Emergency Services, AKA CARES Team. And whereas, he led the department and worked to develop the very successful labor management relations that the department experiences today. And whereas, he had served as the committee chair for, uh, the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Education Association. And whereas, he served as the chair of the Madison College Fire Advisory Committee. And whereas, he was recognized as a hometown hero by the Wisconsin State Assembly in 2022. Now, therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council express, uh, their appreciation for the services and dedication that Fire Chief Stephen A. Davis gave to our community during his years of service. And be it finally resolved that the mayor and common council wish him all the best in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Alders. And Chief Davis is here with us. Chief?
Thank you. Um, that, that was a lot of work. I feel like I need a nap after, uh, just hearing it. But, um, thank you for all the support, uh, that the Common Council has given the Fire Department, um, for a long, long time. Um, I'm not the best politician, as many of you have found out over the years. Um, not my favorite thing to do. I, I like the Fire Department. While I love the Fire Department, was not a big fan of the politics. So thank you to you all in the Common Council for taking it easy on me over the years and the support. I'd like to also thank the mayor and her staff, uh, as well as former Mayor Soglan and his staff. Um, I feel like I've, uh, I've served, uh, very well under both mayors, uh, that I work for, as well as, uh, many Alders, um, over the years. But, but thank you very much. And, and, um, the recognition really goes to the Madison Fire Department, the people themselves. Um, you know, they, they bought into the vision 10 years ago, and, uh, I, all that stuff that was on the resolution, I couldn't have done without them. And then lastly, I'd just like to thank my family, my wife and my daughters, um, because they made this possible for me. So, thank you. Um, and I will see you around.
Thank you, Chief. I hope you're seeing the virtual round of applause that you're getting. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you. I needed to pop into the queue first. Um, Chief Davis, I was not able to, um, join you on Friday, but, um, I, I have these parting words, and I looked up the term for integrity, and I need you to hear this, and this is coming from all of us. The quality of being honest, having strong moral principles, moral uprightness, the state of being whole and undivided, firm adherence to a code of moral value. And that, my friends, is Chief Davis. Uh, we bid you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue. Is there any objection if I speak from the chair? Oh, we'll go to the Alders first. Um, but we actually have, uh, several members of the Fire Department here. I see Assistant Chief Burris and, uh, Chief, uh, Assistant Chief Tartar is here. Would you like to speak, Chief? Liza, you're muted if you're speaking to us.
Uh, there you are.
Uh, I just wanted to jump in and reiterate, um, uh, some of the things were already said here, but, um, uh, certainly throughout his, um, tenure here, Chief Davis prioritizes people, the citizens of Madison, and providing outstanding service, uh, whether it was with, uh, uh, new employees sitting down with various work groups, um, having a cup of coffee with crews at the fire station at the beginning of the shift. He worked hard to be accessible, a good communicator, and showed that he cares. Um, Chief Davis, for us, defined the principles of outstanding service. Uh, those are honor, integrity, caring, commitment, and respect, and he led from the forefront with those, uh, principles. So Chief, there's no doubt that we will miss you, and it has been a true honor to serve beside you. Uh, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Alder Verveer?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I too certainly, uh, want to congratulate you, Chief, on your very well-deserved retirement. Uh, as I, as I told you, Steve, back, uh, in October, when you announced your retirement from the fire service in Madison, uh, I firmly believe that you will leave a tremendous legacy of accomplishment in so many areas. Uh, our community has really been blessed by your commitment, and I must say, especially those of us that have the pleasure of living in Station Number One's territory, uh, all of the years that, that you, um, served those of us in the downtown area, Station One's territory, uh, earlier in your career, have really been blessed by you for, you know, over three decades. And I, I say that truly. Steve, you say you're, you're a poor politician, but I have to beg to differ. It's not the first time I've heard you say that. And I have to say, your record of accomplishment has memorialized in your honoring resolution, and that I think most all of us in this meeting are well aware of, would, would beg to differ with, with you, uh, and your modesty in terms of, uh, thinking that you don't work well some, at times with elected officials. I have to say, as a longtime member of the City Finance Committee, that you have, uh, absolutely brought tremendous resources to your colleagues in the fire service, uh, in the last 10 years, as Chief in particular. Uh, I don't repeat the litany of accomplishments in that area, most of which were mentioned in the resolution. But, uh, you know, most recently, the, uh, renovation of Station Six, obviously, um, many other investments that were articulated in the resolution. I want to s- also acknowledge that, uh, if it wasn't for you, I don't know that the EOC would have gotten off on such quick, short footing when the global pandemic came to our community a few years ago. Uh, I know that you sprang into action, you marshaled the forces, along, obviously, with a lot of help from all of, uh, our city agencies. But time and time and time again, uh, you have shown tremendous leadership. Steve, I want to say that I will personally miss you very much, um, uh, and your leadership in particular, uh, as you know, but I know my colleagues aren't aware. Uh, I've known you for a very, very long time, well before you put the white shirt on, as we call it. Uh, and I want you to know that it always meant a lot to me, whether you were apparatus engineer or lieutenant, in particular, as lieutenant at Station One, that you would take the time to not only wave to me as you were driving down State Street or driving around downtown and spotting me, but that moreover, you would always take the time to explain the incident if I happened upon an incident and you were there. Uh, and I don't remember what year I first met you, it was so long ago, but I want you to know that that meant a lot to me, uh, when you were still wearing that blue shirt. So I will miss you very much. We will all miss you very much. And, uh, I really can't thank you enough. We all can't thank you enough for your tremendous public service to our community. Godspeed, my friend.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Carter?
Well, all I can do is ditto everybody else. It's hard to have words left after you come behind Alder Verveer, so I've crossed out a lot of what I was gonna say. However, I do appreciate our many conversations, and the one thing no one has said, they haven't quoted Tina Turner. So that's what I'm gonna do tonight. You are simply the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Assistant Chief Burris. And we can't hear you, Assistant Chief. I don't know if there's an issue with the audio on your end.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, great. Um, I, I'm just gonna keep it short and simple and just say that, uh, to Chief Davis, that I really appreciate him picking me for his team. Um, I think as a person of color and a woman in the fire service, sometimes you just want to show up and be a member of the team and be seen as a firefighter. Um, and I absolutely believe that is how, uh, Chief Davis sees me, and that has made, um, working for him really, really fantastic. So I want to say thank you for that, and I'm sure I'll see you around, um, because I'm gonna need help with that camper. So, congratulations on your retirement, Chief Davis.
congratulations on your retirement, Chief Davis.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it. And thank you to Alder Carter.
Thank you, Chief. Alder Miyazi?
Yeah, I cannot get away without saying that, given that he lives in my district, you know, that was one of the doors I knocked. And talk about the most humblest person there is, you know. There's also a great saying, not everybody's saying good sayings. There's always a saying that says, no greater love is there than a person that lays down their life for another one. And when I think about the legacy of 251 people and members of the fire department that he's helped direct, I mean, that's a lot of people to, and 100, well, 251 and 142, that's a lot of people that you've directed in order to run into buildings and save lives. So I just wanted to commend you for that legacy.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue. So now I'll ask if there's any objection if I speak from the chair. Seeing none. I just have to say a few things about Chief Davis. We haven't worked together for that long, but it was apparent to me very early on in my tenure as mayor that he brought really steady, reliable leadership, not just to the fire department, but to the city. And, you know, I sort of think back through the challenges and crises that we faced together learning about what an emergency operations center is and should be and how that works and what my role was as mayor. And that's something I learned from Chief Davis. And countless other things, which I won't go into detail. But throughout it all, as many of you know, he's got a wicked sense of humor. Not always appropriate for public meetings, but always funny. And he has been absolutely steadfast in his support for our city's priorities. Certainly in his advocacy and championing of the fire department, but also in his support for Team City overall. And I really appreciate that. I appreciate his guidance and advice and hope that I will be able to continue to count on that even after he leaves the city. And I just want to share one thing that, as I was talking with folks at the chief's retirement party, there's a number of retirees there. And I won't share the stories that they shared with me about the chief when he was a teenager. But I will let you know that multiple retirees expressed, in one form or another, how much they appreciated that the chief continued to make them feel like they were a part of the fire department and continued to check on them and get to know them and their families and support them, even though they were retired. And I think that really speaks to the kind of person that Chief Davis is and the kind of service that he's brought to our city for all these years. So Chief, thank you for everything you've done for our city and congratulations on retirement. I hope you get in some good fishing time and some good time with your family. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for everything.
So with no further ado, then, I believe we do need still a motion. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
And a second from Alder Martin. Is there any objection to recording an enthusiastic vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item six. Thank you again, Chief, for joining us tonight. And we're on to disclosures and recusals. Are there any disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Alder Martin?
I would like to disclose that I do work part-time at a service industry location. And I do believe that I can still be fair and unbiased regarding the issues tonight that might be coming up regarding the street races, et cetera. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Ritterver?
Sorry, item 156, I need to disclose that I'm a DHS employee.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any further disclosures or recusals? Seeing none, then we're on to the consent agenda. President Abbas?
Thank you. I have too many files open. At this time, a consent agenda will be moved with the recommended action list is for each item except agenda item number eight to 31, a public hearing item. Agenda item number nine to 16 is ALRC recommended action is to re-refer to April 20th, ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 21, 24, 26 includes referral to the future council meetings. The following items are extra majority items. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a vote call or exclusion is requested. Legislative file number 48. Agenda item number 48, legislative file number 69912, amending the 2022 adopted capital budget and approving plans and specification and authorizing the Board of Public Works to advertise and receive bids for the street division. Requires 15 votes. Agenda item number 89, legislative file number 69940, amending the 2022 capital budget for engineering, storm waters, utility to allow for the application acceptance of 250,000 municipal flood control grant for the state of Wisconsin. Required 15 votes. Agenda item number 95, legislative file number 70348, amending the police department's 2022 operating budget and authorizing the mayor and chief police designated to accept juvenile justice title to grant award for the state of Wisconsin Department of Justice in amount of $33,600 in pass-through funding to Vice Wisconsin, aim for youth mentoring in the community violence intervention, breaking the circle, wraparound services pilot program, require 15 votes. Agenda item number 99, legislative file number 70459, amending the 2022 operating budget and setting the 2022 rates for the silver and storm water. Require 15 votes. Agenda item number 101, legislative file number 70466, create the classification of police director in CG-18, rank 16 in the salary schedule and create the new position. TBD as police director in police department operating budget, requires 14 votes. Agenda item part of consent agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Agenda item number four, legislative file number 70420, United Way of Dean County, celebrating 100 year, referred to April 19th, common council meeting. Agenda item number nine, legislative file number 70259, public hearing. Item new license Liberty Square Gas Station, Inc. Reason for referral is 316, ALRC meeting adjourned because of lack of coram, so it could be referred to 420, ALRC. Agenda item number 10, legislative file number 70260, public hearing item new license, McCoon's Edible Spoon LLC. It will also refer to ALRC 420. ALRC meeting, agenda item number 11, legislative file number 70261, public hearing item new license LM Embrio Mexican Food LLC. It will also refer to April 20th, ALRC meeting. Legislative file, agenda item 12, legislative file number 70262, new license forward craft and coffee LLC. Will also refer to April 20th, ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 13, legislative file number 70263, new license the Renfor Refreshment Company LLC. Will also refer to April 20th, ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 14, legislative file number 70264, new license the Renfor Refreshment Company LLC. Will also refer to ALRC on April 20th meeting. Agenda item number 15, legislative file number 70265, new license Renfor Refreshment LLC. This will also refer to 420, ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 16, legislative file number 70417, new license Patricia Supermarket, Inc. It will also refer to April 20th, ALRC meeting. Agenda item number 21, legislative file number 69519, amending the city of Madison official map to establish map preservation for future streets and highways in city of Madison, consistent with recommendation and adopted Oscar My Special Area Plan. Recommended action is to refer to 719, 2022, common council meeting. Legislative file number, agenda item 24, legislative file number 69517, substitute creating section 28.002-00546 of Madison General Ordinance to change the zoning of property located at 2007 Fourth Street, 12th Autonomic District. Recommended action is to refer to 719, common council meeting. Agenda item number 26, legislative file number 69538, alternate creating section 28.002-00552 of Madison General Ordinance to change the zoning of the property located at 702 Ruskin Street, 12th Autonomic District. And reason of referral is zoning protest petition received, and it will refer to April 19th, common council meeting. Agenda item number 82, legislative file number 70671, amending section 15.02 of Madison General Ordinance to update order ward bond rates resulting from state redistricting. His reason for referral is recent US Supreme Court has the late adoption of the state redistricting maps requiring adjustment of city boards. Agenda item number 127, legislative file number 70655, creating section 28.022-00560 of the Madison General Ordinance to reason property located at 2165 Lyndon Avenue, 15th Autonomic District. It will be additional refer is to Urban Design Commission on April 13th. Item request for exclusion is item number 122, legislative file number 70641, amending section 41.02, 41.03, 41.05, 41.11, 41.142B and C, 41.143, 41.151, 41.183, and repealing and recreating subchapter 41G of the Madison General Ordinance. And additional referral is to Economic Development Committee, April 20th, and Housing Strategy Committee on 428. And reason for additional referral is for review of the potential impact of amended language in subsection five entitled measuring 200 feet around the properties of section 41.03, entitled general medicine, general administrative provisions. Item introduced from the floor for referral is legislative file number 70745, a resolution to authorize a non-competitive purchase of goods and services from JWC Building Special, Special is Incorporated as a sole source provider of air walls, movable partition systems. This expenditure will be funded through Manona Terrace 2022 capital budget. The system will cost $455,000. And recommended action is to refer to Finance Committee, April 11th, in common council, April 19th.
Thank you, Alder. We have registrants on items 45, 114, and 116. So we will also exclude those items from the consent agenda. Are there other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the consent agenda at this time? Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like agenda item 19, legislative number 69382 excluded for discussion.
Alder, item 19 is a public hearing item, so we'll be taking it up.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other items, Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. Are items 21 and 24 excluded because they have registrants?
Yes, they're public hearings.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other items that others would like to have excluded from the consent agenda? And any other items for the consent agenda before I go over? Okay. So then, just to summarize, items eight through 31 are public hearing items. I do want to note that items nine through 16, the action that I hope we'll be taking is to refer back to the ALRC. And we do not have any registrants wishing to speak on those items, so I will not be opening and closing all of those public hearings. I'll just ask for a motion to refer them all back at once. I also want to note that for items 21, 24, and 26, while we do have registrants on those items, the recommended motion will be a referral to future council meetings where we will again have a public hearing on those items. So if members of the public, certainly welcome to register and speak tonight, but also welcome to defer your comments to when the council actually takes those items up in the future. And so that said, agenda items eight through 31 are public hearing items. The following are extra majority items, 48, 89, 95, 99, and 101. We have additional recommendations that I haven't talked about yet. On item 82, which is to refer to the 419 council meeting, and 127, which is an additional referral to urban design. And then for exclusion, we have items 45, 114, 116, and 122, and an introduction from the floor. President Abbas, a motion. Alder Furman?
And just to be safe, is it worth mentioning our closed session and 164 is not part of the consent?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent addition. Better to say that out loud. So 164 will also be excluded from the consent agenda. Are there any other items? Alder Heck?
Sorry, Mayor, you'll have to educate me. When an item is on a, is a public hearing item and there are registered speakers yet in our, it's listed as on the consent agenda, does it need to be pulled off the consent agenda if I'm interested in discussing it?
So Alder, you raise an interesting procedural question. We are slowly inching our way towards expanding the consent agenda to include our public hearing items, but we're not quite there yet. And so the default is that if it's a public hearing item, we would take it up whether or not there are registrants. And, you know, tonight, we're making an exception for the items that will be referred back to ALRC. But in general, at this point, our presumption is that if it's a public hearing item, we would be taking it up.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. It's a good question, Alder. And you notice that I'm edging us in a direction, but we're not all the way there yet. Any other items for the consent agenda? All right, then. Now, President Abbas, a motion.
Just for clarification, so agenda item number nine to 16, ALRC is part of, right now, is part of the consent agenda or we need to separate?
No, I'll do a separate motion.
All right. Move motion to adopt consent agenda.
Second. It's moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. And I'll just note that you do have in your email the full list of registrants so that you can see the folks that were registered not wishing to speak. I won't be going through them. Anything further on the consent agenda? Any objections? Recording unanimous vote in favor. Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is adopted and we will go Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is adopted and we will go to our public comment. And uh and so first what I'd like to do, uh actually, sorry, we'll, we will take up. Sorry, we will jump through to public comment. Haven't quite got the order of public comment versus public hearings going here yet. So uh we will start then uh with public comment on agenda item twenty one. And our first registrant is Barbara Noldner of Maple Bluff to be followed by Paul Noldner and David Bierman.
Okay, um. Uh for item twenty one, um I'm opposed to item twenty one. We must not build roads across this uh Capitol area regional planning commission environmental corridor. Um we can put those roads somewhere else. This is our chance to protect an important natural area for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next tradition is Paul Notler of Maple Bluff to be followed by David Bierman to be followed by Beth Sloyes.
Yeah, hi, Paul here. Um. Uh I'm speaking uh on behalf of the Friends of Hartmire Natural Area and and uh some of the uh a lot of our supporters, including business owners around it who want to see old park uh in that area uh that's impacted by currently impacted by the proposed street reservation. I understand there's a chance to change reservations later, but it makes it very hard if this reservation goes in before we actually establish the boundaries of the park. So um there was strong public support in the onset planning process to save all thirty acres. And there was a council vote at three in the morning, some of you recall, to save sixteen, at least sixteen acres. Unfortunately, a hastily drawn map boundary at three A M included some already developed non-conforming acres. And the proposed street reservation puts streets right up to the wetland and destroys the only long tree line. We need a boundary map that resolves those problems. Um there are reasons I will go into further when we get to item twenty four. But uh planning staff and the plant commission have at this point not provided the council with a map that saves sixty acres of wetland open space as the council approved in the onset plan. Instead, they have these non-conforming acres and the street reservation that goes within two feet of the wetland boundary with no seventy five foot minimum setback. And it paves right over the only long mature tree line, literally paving over trees because the word is those trees are not worth saving. Tell that to the fox, crane, steers, hawks, bunnies and other wildlife that currently live there. The and uh worse yet, the proposed street reservation is currently mapped would in fact preclude saving sixteen open acres, giving the council no choice on the proposal to create a sixteen acre con uh conservation nature park. Um what I would ask the council to do is please refer item twenty one and request a map showing an alternative street reservation that resolves these issues. Um there is an alternative centerline uh map that has been prepared, I understand, by engineering. There are alternative streets and centerlines that could potentially be used. This needs to be done in order to give the council a choice when you vote on item twenty one and when you vote on item twenty four. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is David Bierman of District eighteen to be followed by Beth Sloyes to be followed by Jennifer Arganlander.
Good evening. In July twenty twenty, with the enactment of Oscar Meyer's special area plan, common council voted and passed legislation to preserve sixteen acres that became known as the Roth Street Wetland Conservation Natural Area. Then the item twenty one is proposal to adopt a map preservation for the extension of Roth and Ruskin Streets through this area. This proposal, as drafted, will not preserve the sixteen acre wetland parcel as resolved by council in July twenty twenty and as proposed will limit the wetland conservation area to only twelve point eight one acres. A loss of over three acres. Critically, the road reservation is positioned through desecrating this track site, cultural indigenous burial site delineated by the Wisconsin State Historical Society. The road there also laid directly through the unique wetland and ecosystem resources with inevitable destruction loss and irreparable harm to the environmental corridor. This initiative also presumes the loss and removal of existing long-term businesses at seventy seven oh five Ruskin Street without the owner's regard. These valuable resources are afforded multiple layers of protection under the Capitol Area Regional Planning Commission Environmental Corridor delineation, wetland delineation, wetland inventory database, city of Madison flood indonation mapping, Wisconsin Historical Society and a host of others. The proposal negates these consensus legislation legislative air layers of protection. Previous city plans detailed viable street locations adjacent to and immediately outside the sixteen acre wetland, fully protecting the resources while providing generous street parcel access and maximizing the developable land to the east. Yet these are not presented. Solutions to meet all needs is available. We need to pause it and work together on that solution. The proposed official map reservation for Roth and Ruskin Streets before connoisseur is non-inclusive of all issues, fair solutions and therefore is premature. This complicated site has a plethora of interactive layers that dictate deliberate interaction to minimize harm to the historical and ecosystem resources while efficiently maximizing future residential development. This is paramount for the benefit of all concerned within the envelope of environmental justice present and future. I request the common council refer right agenda item twenty one with adequate time to a future date and a further resolve that the community, city staff and cultural and environmental authorities organized by District older twelve work together in consensus-driven road reservation plan. A fully integrated road reservation plan which attains full resource protection intact sixteen acre area intended, efficient land use and public safety policy for residential development and stakeholder consensus will be the universal goal for the future common council consideration and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Sloyes of District eighteen to be followed by Jennifer Argalander.
Thank you. Good evening. The this road reservation is clearly premature and being planned without input from the community, local businesses, landowners or neighbors. Putting a road through trees privately owned buildings and through land that is all too close to a burial mound site in the burrows along Roth Street is a bad idea. Putting a road through a building that is home to an otherwise homeless person is a bad plan. This proposed road goes through the wind on the east side of the site with an environmental corridor within a wetland overlay district and is too close to the wetland. So that will be negatively impacted by runoff from the road salt and other road source contaminants. The sixteen acre boundary provides protections and until that area is mapped, roadway reservation should be referred so that the best placement can be determined. In an area specifically planned for transportation oriented development, it does not make sense to use land for more roadways. We're trying to encourage less auto use to encourage public transportation use. It seems counter to the goals of the uh Oscar Meyer Special Area Plan. Counter to our efforts at working on climate change issues, counter to the current development of our rapid that bus transit system and the new bus routes being planned right now. How do we increase ridership to support the B R T system if we encourage car use? In other areas of the city with new apartment buildings, planners have incorporated the use of additional fees to tenants with more than one car. Uh and this in the the goal of this is to reduce car use. Efforts are happening elsewhere in the city for reducing car use, but high density housing with additional roadways is what we're looking at on the north side. Because this road reservation does not address the concerns of the community, I request that this agenda item is referred so the people most impacted have a chance to work with the alder and staff on better options. There are plenty of road reservation options that have been considered by staff, just not shared with us here tonight or to the council. There's a map of road reservations that make better sense. These options are on the city's website on the G I S map. Would be helpful to share these options to the landowners, building owners, friends of Hartmire and all other impacted parties. We can find a better road route or perhaps get creative with no roadways at all. I believe that the many issues related to the road mapping are complicated and require more conversations by land and building owners, the Friends Group, the Sherman Neighbor Association and the community at large as it pertains to the best location for the road to provide protections for both the natural and cultural resources at the wetland site as well as the best options for all those in the community that are negatively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh our last register wishing to speak on this item is Jennifer Argalander of District twelve.
Uh Jennifer, you should see a prompt to unmute. At least I think that's you. You were you were in the queue as just Jennifer, so um. Perhaps that's not you because you are not unmuting. Okay, I think that's it for that item.
All right, thank you. Are there uh questions for any of the registrants on item twenty one? I'll remind us that the motion will be to refer. Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. Um I have a question for Kevin McDonald who's registered and available to answer questions.
Um not on this item, Alder?
Oh, he's maybe he's on twenty four. Uh I reloaded. I think he is uh at seven twenty three.
Let me reload. Hold on. Ah, yes, I see. Go ahead. Do we have, do we have Kevin McDonald from Santa Monica, California with us representing Lincoln Avenue Capital?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, uh Alder Heck has a question for you.
Uh Kevin, um we Alders, all Alders, received an email from you recently with concern about referring these items. Can you explain what your concern is?
Yeah, um I guess so. We were just made aware um of some of the requested changes just today. So the um some of this information is very new here, but um uh long story short. We've been uh working to try to come up with a concept um over a number of um months over the um at the since the beginning of the year here and.
Sorry, Kevin, I'm gonna interrupt you and ask uh who's we?
Uh our team, Lincoln Avenue Capital, uh and we're working with J L A Architects. And then Melissa Hugging uh hu- hug with Urban Assets is our zoning consultant. And so I guess uh uh long story short, um our plan is uh to utilize um affordable housing tax credits and um part of that process involves um a timeline of needing to close before the end of the year. And as part of our uh purchase agreement, we have uh financing contingencies um that need to be satisfied um over the next few months here and delaying uh four months. Uh unfortunately would not work for our development to move forward.
So you're you're talking specifically about financing for your development proposal? Is is what's going to be impacted?
Correct.
And um if 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 this referral were to be uh sped up, let's say, until uh April or May, would that solve the problem for you?
May would be very challenging if if April was possible. Um that could be feasible if we certainly love to work through a collaborative approach on uh solving the concerns. You know, we think um our plan really fits in with um the special area plan and um you know, we're very excited about the work that's already been done uh to create the conservation district.
And okay, thank you. And and have you met with city staff about your development proposal and in the uh already?
Yes, um we've had a number of um meetings with city staff. Um again, unfortunately, we haven't been able to present any concept um re- regarding the development just because of the the plating of the roads has been in in question, I guess, for a number of months here. So we've been sitting in limbo a little bit um waiting to see if the current roads as plotted, um and I guess this was previously presented, I think, through a number of the different meetings um was was going to move forward as planned.
All right, thank you. Uh those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, better questions for registrants?
Yes, um I have a follow-up questions um for Kevin.
Go ahead.
So um last semester, I actually took a class in affordable housing where we spent a good chunk of our time um learning about how Lytech works um and even filling out that whole process. Could you remind me of like what dates you need to file that um what am I trying to say your application by?
Um so this process is a little different. Um this process we're actually um utilizing the non-competitive four percent tax credit program. And I'm glad you brought that up because that was one of the other things I was gonna clarify um regarding the project. Uh at the end of um twenty twenty one, um this development is in what's called a qualified census tract that actually um expired. Um we did submit a bond application to W E D A at the end of uh twenty twenty one, which allowed our development to preserve the qualified census tract treatment, which allows a four percent tax credit development um to be uh well, in this case financially feasible. And so that also comes with a a number of other timelines because the tract is extended. It's only extended um for a certain period of time and that also makes getting the constructions started by the end of the year even more important.
And you wanna start construction by the end of this year?
Yes.
Okay, sweet.
We'd at least at minimum like to have our development approvals in place um so that we can close on our financing and and finalize everything, you know, possibly we'd start in the spring of twenty twenty three. But our plan would be to hopefully have all of our entitlement approvals by the end of twenty twenty two.
Okay, um and um could you s- I know you spoke a bit that you're interested in like furthering this compromise and from my conversations, it seems like the one of the reasons for referral is to come to that compromise. I'm wondering if we don't refer, how will you continue working with the neighborhood to um ensure that like a compromise and what they're looking for and what you're looking for is made?
Yeah, um in in terms of the compromise, I mean if there's a way to refer until April and work towards this, unfortunately um on that one, I guess I'd have to defer a little bit to city staff. Um it it seems like some of the compromise that's wanted is in regards to the city streets. And it it seems like some of that might be a little bit more challenging to change.
No, yeah, I understand. That's okay. Thank you. Um also, in in like, this is hopefully my last question, but um in my review of this, these issues, it there are a number of environmental concerns that come up with um this area. So I understand that there might have been um environmental studies already in this, but um maybe for future development, um there would need to be some more environmental studies. I'm wondering if your development group is interested in further pursuing that? Um or what are your thoughts on those issues?
Yeah, so I mean currently we're re- reviewing the data and and working with the W D N R to see what additional information may be needed. Um so it, we haven't completed our own phase one study yet, but we have engaged an environmental consultant to help us with that process.
Sure. Would you um be interested or think about completing a phase two study?
Um if it's if it's something that our phase one study comes back. If it's, if it's something that our phase one study comes back and shows would be needed, of course. And that's something that our, our lenders and investors would frankly require us to do as well.
Sure.
But you know, we want to make sure we're, we're protected environmental, from an environmental perspective and obviously developing the site in a way that's safe for future residents.
Right, right. No one wants to live in an unsafe home. So, and I'm sure you don't want to do that either. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Abbas, questions for registrants?
Yeah, thank you very much. Kevin, how many times we met? And your group specifically?
We met one time. And I know Melissa's had a few discussions with you.
Sorry to interrupt you. And what was the discussion when we met?
The last discussion I think we had was to connect with you once we had a concept in place to discuss our development plan.
So what I remember, the discussion we had last time, which you alluded is about WEDA and because of those census, asking a support from me, county supervisor and state rep, Francisca Hong, correct? That was a discussion we had?
Yep, that was part of the discussion, definitely.
After that discussion, have ever your group reached out to me about your timeline, about your application, which phase you are at? Have ever any of you reached out to me from your group about timeline or any about the project information?
I am not sure what conversations Melissa has, has had with you.
I just talked once with Melissa about zoning, but I did not heard from your group at all about any timeline. This, the information you're sharing is also a bit news to me as well, but I will speak when I will come to this agenda item. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other questions for registrants? Alder Furman?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask Kevin a quick question. Kevin, when did you find out about the request to delay this? That it was going to possibly be up this evening?
Yeah, it was, I believe, it was just a short while ago. Let me look through my emails here, but I believe Melissa shared it. It was just, or it was today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any further questions? Alder Bennett for the second time?
Yes, I don't know if this is wrong of me to ask, but I understand you're working on a really tight construction timeline. And I don't know, from like the case study that I did for class with Lytec credits, I know it's really hard to work on a compressed timeline and get through the application. I mean, is it like the worst thing if it doesn't get through this year? Like, I mean, what happens if you were to delay the construction for a year? Would that mean that your project would just fall through and ju, altogether?
Yeah, it would definitely fall through if it were delayed past the current timeline. But again, the, the big thing with getting the qualified census tract extended is that, that creates a timeline for getting things complete. You know, and I will say, we really, we have a very, if things were to go on schedule and get approved as their plan for today, we really don't have a tight timeline. We have a timeline that is very, very feasible and has some cushion in it, we believe. And so, you know, obviously, the last meeting had to be canceled. And, and then now we found out there might be this further delay. So obviously, ever, the, the delays are starting to add up here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other Alders in the queue with questions for registrants on this item? So we'll move on to item 24. And I'll just remind us again that the presumptive motion is referral on item 24. Our first registrant is Paul Noldner, again of Maple Bluff, to be followed by Barbara Noldner, to be followed by David Bierman.
Okay, hello? Yes, thank you. I would mentioned earlier that there was strong public support in the offset planning process for saving all 30 acres. 16 acres is the area that constitutes the wetland. What happened was, as a, as a compromise, council proved compromise. And the public actually believes we have 16 acres already. We're just hoping to make sure the council's wishes are honored. Unfortunately, the hastily drawn map, when they did the compromise at 3:00 AM in the morning, after really thorough discussion, includes some already developed, non-conforming acres, put streets right up to the wetland and destroys the only long tree line. We need a boundary map that resolves those problems. Stepping back for a second, do we really believe in science and climate and facts? That's what we need to aggressively save and restore wetlands, not marginalize them. Is sustainability just a slogan about recycling pop cans while we pave our open spaces? Or is it about saving sustainable pockets of nature everywhere we live? Do we really care about saving nature right next to where people live and kids play? And not only on the edge of town where richer folks already live on big lots or far away someplace else? Can Madison support affordable housing and save nearby urban nature for a growing diverse population to enjoy? Can Madison add the needed housing in this plan and others by building up rather than out to save natural areas or in cornfields that are already pesticide to death rather than destroying right up to the border of our last few urban wetland natural areas? The council deserves a choice and you have not been given one. Planning staff and the planning commission have not provided you with the map that saves 16 acres of wetland open space as the common council approved. Instead, they include some acres that were already developed and non-conforming and prepare a street reservation that goes within two feet of a wetland boundary with no minimum 75-foot recommended setback. It paves right over the only long mature tree line because they say that now we're saving. As I said before, tell that to the fox crane steer, fox bunnies and other wildlifes that live there. I could go on. We've been toward a great deal of large number of birds and wildlife. The proposed street reservation as currently mapped would in fact preclude saving 16 open acres, taking away your choice on item 24. Planning staff and the planning commission did not remedy those acre, those problems and/or move the street reservation to allow fully protecting the wetland as mapped in the Carpecy Environmental Corridor. In each case, they argue that saving the wetland and the trees have been degraded by infill and human trash that are not worth saving. You need a map, a map from staff that protects those acres to consider. Please support zoning a 16-acre CN Conservation Nature Park and direct planning staff to provide a CN zoning boundary map that saves a full 16 acres of the historic wetland open space behind the Oscar Meyer plant. This saves the key wetland.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Barbara Noldner of Maple Bluff, to be followed by David Bierman, to be followed by Beth Sloyes.
Yes, hi. I want to see the 16-acre Conservation Nature Park here that the people of Madison more promise. And we need to see the boundaries that preserve the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission Environmental Corridor. The roads can be moved. This is our chance to preserve this important area for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is David Bierman of District 18, to be followed by Beth Sloyes, to be followed by Jennifer Arglander.
Action before you tonight under action, agenda item 24. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The action before you tonight under agenda item 24 is a proposal to change CN zoning for this area. The zoning boundary was to protect area envisioned. Our adjacent area planning initiatives have been chipped away until the agenda item 24 proposal before you tonight consists of a CN boundary of only 12.81 acres, over three acres less than intended 16. Lost to the proposed road location on the east boundary along line of mature cottonwood trees that stand as sentinels along the undisturbed, unsurveyed track site. Cultural indigenous burial zone designated by the State Historical Society, also destroyed by the planned Rose reservation adjacent wetland upland afforded delineated protection by the Environmental Corridor and the inevitable destruction loss irreparable harm to a deep wetland and ecosystem and historical cultural resource. The proposal before you tonight negates consensus legislative layers of protection such as the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission Environmental Corridor delineation, wetland delineation, and many others that I mentioned earlier. The plans had detailed viable street locations adjacent to and immediately outside the 16-acre wetland, fully protecting the resources, yet these have been neglected, even though solutions are available. The site dictates deliberate interaction to minimize the harms of historic and ecosystem resources while efficiently maximizing future residential development. This is paramount and the benefit for all concerned in the envelop of environmental justice in present and future. I request the common council refer this agenda item 24 with adequate time to a future date to further resolve that the community, city staff and cultural environmental authorities organized by District 12 Alder work together in consensus definition of the full 16-acre zoning boundary to maximize protection of the cultural, environmental resources while upholding efficient land use, public safety policy and residential development. Please act to ensure that all 16 acres of Roth Street Wetland Conservation Area are protected and saved as intended. Now is not the time to dump the gun and enter into some sort of a situation where development precludes the natural order and the legal order of the protection of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Beth Sloyes of District 18, to be followed by Jennifer Arglander, to be followed by Christine Alholm.
Thank you, Mayor. In July of 2020, the council voted to a commitment to protect public health and safety during north side redevelopment. Planning staff acknowledged this commitment and felt it important and valid, so it was included in our plan to address racial justice and social equity during the OMSAP redevelopment process, which must include assessing and preventing human exposures to toxic chemicals at the site and/or released from the site among all people and particularly at-risk low-income and people of color. As community leaders, you are charged with the protection of the health and safety of our most vulnerable families, of all families. This rezoning effort is massive, as you can see, has many considerations. And so I'm requesting that you refer this item so that we can work with the Alder and staff and our newly introduced developers for the wetland site, as well as all the future development and plans at the Oscar Meyer site. As you look at zoning for the highest density allowable in Madison, RMX, it does not make sense to create low-income and working poor housing next to or on top of some of the most highly contaminated land in Madison. We need to make sure that we understand the extent of the contamination by conducting a community-wide environmental assessment, as was completed on Madison South Side prior to redevelopment. We can get a USCPA grant that will be focused solely on the north side contamination issues. Keep the land designated for RMX or TRU2 in its current zoning until we know the full extent of the contamination in this plan area and then decide on safe land use. Just as this council recently voted to protect low-income and working poor families from harm's way related to the F-35 jets, we need to remember that this area has been industrial for over 100 years. In recent times, the city chose not to buy 15 acres in a building with toxic chemical vapors at the north end of the Oscar Meyer property. And this was in, to keep, help keep our metro workers safe. Now, once again, your time to protect our neighbors from being placed in harm's way as we look to redevelopment within this plan area. Assess, determine cleanup and the safest use, and then rezone as determined by the science, not the developers. Please conserve the cultural resource, which is a known indigenous burial area site called the Track Site, which contains an unsurveyed mound site that the Wisconsin Historical Society and the state archaeologists have determined should be investigated. The area that is a known burial site covers almost the entire 2007 Roth Street property. We need to be careful to honor our neighbors, the Ho-Chunk Nation and their ancestors. If we are wise, we could consider the purchase of this land for a land back opportunity to the Ho-Chunk Nation. It is a known, it's known to have held the remains of their ancestors and still likely does. The Ho-Chunk Nation's flag being raised over Baskin Hall was described as a first good step by Mr. Eagle White, leader of the Ho-Chunk Nation. Returning this land to its ancestors is a good second step. You can choose action over just acknowledgement.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jennifer Arglander, to be followed by Christine Alholm, and I just want to note that it's President White Eagle.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I oppose the reduction of the 16 acres that, that happened at the plan commission meeting. We lost almost three. First of all, the council didn't approve 16 acres in 2020, and people living in our neighborhood were absolutely shocked to hear that that decision is not being honored. By not honoring that original vote, the city council, city staff and the mayor will lose credibility in the eyes of the Northsiders, and that is not a good thing. Also, instead of thinking that the people in this neighborhood are just whiners, the city and the mayor should look at this issue in a new light. The mayor could showcase this rare urban functioning wetland. If the city really does believe in fighting climate change, protecting the environment for all, not just the wealthy, and providing access to nature for all Madisonians, this could be a showcase accomplishment. Madison could try to emulate Portland, who has done amazing things for low-income seniors, disabled residents with their creative designs. One such example is the design for those with disabilities, where smaller housing is designed around a natural area, thus providing housing with dignity. We can always put in more housing, but you can't move a natural functioning wetland. This gem is located near a school where students can learn about climate change, environmental challenges, and a wetland and its benefits. Across the street is senior housing where those seniors can walk in nature. There are buses that stop near the wetlands so people who can't get out of town can actually enjoy nature right downtown. The north side is filled with low-income housing. That is not a negative. That is just a fact. There is only one general grocery store, and the new Madison transportation plan is removing the only bus that takes people to the grocery store. Sticking more low-income or vulnerable people in intense housing back in a corner with no bus service, no amenities on contaminated land is not acceptable. The city staff have told me that it's the developers' job to address this contamination, not really the city's concern. Well, that's not acceptable either. I am requesting that decisions on this very complex rezoning be referred until new boundaries for the full 16 acres can be redefined, and then we define where the road goes. We, as a community, want to work with our Alder and the city planning staff to create a more realistic plan for this area. And given the complexity of this area and the issues, I would strongly urge the Alders to come and actually see the area under consideration so each Alder has a clearer idea of what is being proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last registrant wishing to speak on this item is Christine Alholm of District 12.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been a Northside resident for 36 years now. I take a lot of pride in being a Northsider. Now, tonight, I have a chance to highlight a very unique place in the north side, but I also have a chance to tell you what I'm worried about. So please hear me out and then make the right decision to keep 16 acres of wetland and zone them all 16 conservation natural. I worry about those of you who haven't visited and witnessed the functioning wetland for yourselves. I worry that you haven't seen this natural gem, this urban space filled with the sights and sounds of nature. I worry that you haven't seen the mature trees and the landscape in the upland that we believe is an indigenous burial site. I worry that you might not realize how it is in an urban area so significant to keep green space for the health and well-being of residents. And it's critical to protect residents from exposure to contamination if high-density housing zoning is approved near the wetland. I worry that you might not have enough respect for the mighty powers of this wetland and how it functions in our environment. Please have the wisdom to vote to keep the sixteen acres of wetland approved in OMSAP. But please wait. Let's refer six nine five one seven until we have more opportunity to discuss with all parties involved the future of this important place on the north side. Let's take the time to do this right. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last registrant wishing to speak on this item. Are there questions for any of our registrants on item twenty-four? Seeing none. We will go on. And our next registrant wishing to speak is on item twenty-six. So on item twenty-six, Bill Connors of District Four, representing Smart Growth Greater Madison.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Smart Growth opposes any proactive rezoning by the city government when the property owner objects. Rezoning property over the objection of the property owner is an abuse of the government's power and discourages private investment in the city. If the property owner is informed of the consequences of the rezoning of their property and does not object, then proactive rezoning is a good thing usually, because it usually facilitates redevelopment of the property. In this case, not only does the property owner object, but the ordinance, as initially introduced, would not facilitate redevelopment of the northern portion of the parcel. The conservancy zoning district would prohibit redevelopment of the northern part of the property after the legal non-conforming use expires. This is a double wrong. If the city government wants to make the two acres at the northern end of the parcel part of the future city park, the city government should negotiate to purchase the property. It appears supporters of the sixteen acre park agree that the city government should not make the businesses on the northern end of the parcel into legal non-conforming uses. They are urging you to find two acres in a different location to reserve sixteen acres for the future city park. The Plan Commission recognized the problem with the ordinance as it was initially introduced and recommended to leave out the part of the ordinance rezoning the northern part of the parcel from IL to CN. The Plan Commission got this absolutely right. Smart Growth asked you to approve the ordinance in the form recommended by the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our only registrant wishing to speak on this item. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none. Then our next item with speakers is item thirty. And our first registrant on this item is Linda Irving of Lafayette, Indiana, to be followed by Robert Mueller, to be followed by Renato Gilberti.
Hi, this is Linda Irving. I am the developer of this particular project. We just registered to be able to answer questions. Our apologies for misunderstanding. So Robert Mueller and Robert Gilberti are here to answer any questions. We do not need to present.
Thank you, Linda. Does that go also for Joseph Meyer and Brady Halverson?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Thank you. So then we also have other registrants available to answer questions. On item thirty, are there any questions for any of the registrants? Seeing none. That takes us to item forty-five. We have one registrant wishing to speak, David Aguayo of District Four, representing the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've already shared my comments via email, so I do not want to belabor the point and take up too much time, as I know you have a full agenda today. Also, I'm on dad duty, so I just came here today to thank the city staff, leadership, and the mayor, the common council, in addressing a major immediate problem our city and businesses were facing during the pandemic and continue to face to this day. We learned from the pilot that this can do more than just support local food and beverage establishments, but it also created a dynamic new outdoor experience for our city. The business community appreciates this lifeline and innovation as we continue to build back a new normal. We look forward to the streetery program becoming permanent, and we are excited for the possibilities to reimagine public spaces moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the registrant? Seeing none. The next item we have registrants on is item one fourteen. And our only registrant wishing to speak is Nicholas Davies of District Fifteen.
Hi, thanks. I'll keep it brief. I wanted to speak in support of Vision Zero and implementing Vision Zero. You might notice kind of the plan is written geared towards two thousand and twenty, and, you know, we're kind of well into that period where we're supposed to start working on Vision Zero and start making progress towards the goal of zero traffic deaths and injuries. And we're, you know, behind other cities on this. Other cities have demonstrated that zero is possible. However, places like New York are also seeing that underlying trends that go against the trend that we're looking to see can make getting to zero more difficult, and we need to be kind of prepared to take those into account and take greater steps if we find that we aren't trending towards zero the way that we expect to. And I just also want everybody to be aware that, you know, we know kind of what the main problem areas are, corridors that have taken lives in the past, places like East Washington and Raymond Road. In my neighborhood, Cottage Grove Road, for example, getting to zero might involve going beyond that and looking at places where fatal accidents could occur, but they haven't yet. And that's kind of where we might need to take a more citywide approach as the project goes on and, you know, look at a more transformational approach to our streets. But thank you all for supporting this.
Thank you. Any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, the next item we have a registrant on is item one sixteen. And we have one registrant wishing to speak, Nicholas Shivo of District Five, representing Anthony and Nicholas Shivo LLC.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. First of all, I want to say the streetery program is fantastic. I remember talking with Alder Benfrovier about this fifteen, eighteen years ago, thinking it would be a great idea, and it's wonderful to see it come to fruition. Unfortunately, last year, one of my tenants went under and vacated my space, and I was working with a neighbor to potentially occupy it, and they backed out. And during that time, they started occupying the space in front of my business and apparently got a permit illegally. Unfortunately, the city was unable to enforce, although they told me they would at first. And I understand their position, but unfortunately, it cost a fortune, because by the time we got around to knowing that it couldn't be enforced, the season was almost over, so not even I could open up in time to utilize that space and make my place useful. What happened after that is a true tragedy. I had a partner in the building at the time, and he lost his home over it. That income stream, we were not able to get. We were not able to rent out the space, and, you know, the big hook was the streetery. It still is. So I think enforcement is a real important thing here. You know, the details of how all that happened will get worked out, I'm sure. I'm not going to try and litigate this here, but I do want some answers eventually. And I also want some assurance that the city will be able to enforce when someone squats on your property. I realized they were given a permit, but I've also been told by city staff and the alder that it was illegal. So I have concerns. I spoke with city staff this week, and they were wonderful to work with. And they were very forthcoming about the current and proposed ordinance and said, hey, you know, if you really want to be sure, this is the place to make sure, because, you know, it's not, it's not an ordinance till it's passed. So I originally was worried that it would be amended and that maybe the city would be able to put someone else in front of your space if it was vacant. The alder has assured me that he's going to do everything to make sure that doesn't happen, and I believe him. But it still leaves enforcement, and it still leaves a real burden on me and my family. And like I said, unfortunately, someone lost their home. So it's important for everybody to understand that the decisions that you make have huge impacts, and enforcement has a huge impact on people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant on this item? All right, seeing none. That is our public comment. So we will go back to item eight, which is Legisstar six nine five seven seven. We'll open a public hearing on a new license for OMS liquor and more. On item eight, we have no registrants. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas.
Just one second. Move motion to place on file without prejudice.
Second. Moved in second to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file without prejudice. Then on items nine through sixteen, President Abbas, could I have a motion to refer back to the Alcohol License Review Committee?
Yep. Move motion to refer to ALRC on April twentieth.
Second. Moved in second to refer those items back to LRC. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, those items will be referred back to the ALRC. All right, then. Item seventeen is Legisstar seven zero zero nine eight, approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for Russell Street Assessment District two thousand and twenty-two. On items seventeen, we had no registrants. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved in second to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will record that vote. On item eighteen is Legisstar seven zero four five seven. Open a public hearing on approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for new sidewalk installation assessment district two thousand and twenty-two. We have no registrants on item eighteen. I will close that public hearing. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Moved in seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote on item eighteen. And that will bring us to item nineteen, which is Legisstar six nine three eight two, amending chapter twenty-eight to create an outdoor eating area temporary associated with food and beverage establishment and a use category in chapter twenty-eight, et cetera. On item nineteen, let's start with a motion. President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second. Thank you. So we have no registrants wishing to speak on item nineteen.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Move motion to adopt with conditions.
Thank you for that note. And item nineteen is related to a number of other items on our agenda tonight. I'm inclined to have staff do a very brief explanation of all of these items and just clarify which items are moving together tonight. So let's see if we have either Megan Blake Horst or Matt Miklajewski here to just give us a quick run-through or Matt Tucker. Whoever wishes to speak on this from the staff side. Matt Tucker? I see your hand is up, but you're not unmuted yet. There you are.
Okay. Hi, folks. Good evening. I can address just part of this. The chapter twenty-eight part is the private property part of the streetery program. It's not the roadway cafe part. That's the part that Megan Blake Horst can speak to. I'm really the person probably most knowledgeable on the private property side, item nineteen, and Megan would be probably the best person to talk about that other item when it comes up. I could do that. I could talk about nineteen now if you'd like, or we could wait.
Why don't you give us just the thumbnail, and then we'll go to Megan. I'd like people to just understand the package.
Sure. So with the streetery program that was introduced back in two thousand and twenty, we had about eighty restaurants or food service places that participated. It was what I guess people would consider a pretty great success, but for a few challenges related principally to outdoor amplified sound or in some cases hours of operation past the allotted hours. What this amendment does is effectively make both the permanent and temporary forms of outdoor seating permitted uses with the, or conditional uses, depending on basically two characteristics. And the use would be a permitted use if the use is occurring no later than nine PM at night and does not include any outdoor amplified sound. That would be a conditional use, as is the current condition for most of the zoning districts, if it had any characteristic outside of, beyond those two, or those two specific restrictions. So this would allow people to do the sort of temporary pop-up style that you might have seen. It would also allow the permanent ones that are equally, they're very similar, that have that similar time characteristic to be permitted uses.
Thank you. Megan, did you want to add anything?
Sure. Yeah. So we have these four items that are moving through all at the same time. One to be very business-friendly. Our operators, we found some use private property space, some use the right-of-way, and some use the roadway, and sometimes many use all three. And so we wanted to move this all forward at the same time on the same timeline so that these operators could know what to do as they look forward to this upcoming season for their outdoor dining. And, yeah, and then I can touch on more as we move into this about the right-of-way pieces. So I did focus a lot of my time on the right-of-way and then working with Matt and his team to ensure that we could get this communication out and hopefully move this forward permanently.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this item? Alder Benford?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I have a question for Matt Tucker. So, Matt, you probably know the question before I even ask it, after some of the challenges that we had in the past with a certain establishment. So my question to you is, and I think a speaker mentioned it about enforcement. So I bring that up because while I'm heartened that there's not going to be amplified music, I'm often reminded that even acoustic music with a drum kit could provide just as much noise as amplified music. Can you tell me, is there guidelines on, is it solo performance, or could a group, acoustic group, perform during the hours?
That's a good question. The ordinance language talks about amplified sound, so I guess it would be, I'd have to think about some circumstances that we ran into, like a single person playing a guitar or somebody, you know, a small group. I think I remember there was a quartet, a string quartet, that was playing at one place, one time. And I believe those types of operations would be permissible as long as they didn't exceed the nine o'clock at night situation. Now, let's keep in mind, though, you know, that's one aspect of the regulation, but if we ran into a situation where somebody was truly doing something very obnoxious at their property, too, that was creating a lot of noise, I don't, I can't even imagine what it might be, but we never know, like, you know, what these things might come out to be. You alders all know, unique things pop up in all your districts, and we talk about them and how to work them out. There is always the opportunity for disturbing the peace type enforcement to happen if you see some, if the police are observing something that is frankly ridiculous and not necessarily related to the permissive nature of the outdoor seating area.
So for clarity, let me just go back to my question that, so there's no- So for clarity, let me just go back to my question that, so there's no amplified music. But if there was an acoustic group that maybe had a drum kit, that would be permitted?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And then I had another question and perhaps it's a, oh, I don't know, hypothetical, but in looking at this change, if we were to exclude MX and TSS zoning areas, would that have a huge impact on the numbers? I think you mentioned there were like eighty last year.
Yes, it would. Many of the the food service businesses that we have are located in those districts. And also the CCT, which is a very similar relationship between a transition from commercial to to residential.
Okay. And then my last question, thank you for helping me understand. With the creation or making this permanent, is there talk of more staff if there has to be enforcement or or provisions within the ALRC or within the Plan Commission? Is there consideration of, you know, we make the assumption that the operators are all going to be responsible. Sadly, that doesn't often happen, but if neighbors don't have a recourse or if they can't get a hold of staff or file a complaint, can you help me understand if there's going to be more consideration around this?
Sure, I can try. You know, and I guess the best way to address those that question or that series of potentials is to kind of think about what we've seen, at least in my time. I started with the city of Madison in two thousand and five. And we've had outdoor seating areas become just hugely popular over those years. And the numbers of complaints that we get are pretty limited. And one of the things that I think we've we've noticed is the correlation between complaints and establishments that serve alcohol. And most often it's, the issues are related to, you know, are somehow connected in that fashion. And what we found that is one of our best enforcement tools has not been a zoning type of enforcement in the very limited instances that we've had that. But it's been related to the potentials of of the permissive alcohol license that that folks have. We did have a few that we took back to the city's Plan Commission for enforcement. Just a few. And beyond that, probably, you know, under, under a dozen complaints about these types of establishments over time. So if we look at what history tells us is, I really don't think we're gonna have much of an issue unless, well, we will have something, we always do. But the question is, you know, we'll just have to figure out how we encounter that when it comes.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
And can I just touch on that? I know that Matt is talking about this item right now, which is about the private property. And then we have a different process when it comes to the right-of-way. So I don't think that's necessarily what you want me to touch on now, but I just wanted to call out attention that this is specifically about private property and not the right-of-way.
Thank you, Megan. Other figure out call, questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm a little bit confused. I don't know. I think my question is for Megan. So I don't know if I need to wait or just ask the question.
Um, if you go ahead, Alder.
Well, I mean, are we talking about all the the package as one or are we we gonna say?
What's before us is is still item nineteen.
Okay, so I'll ask the question if it's not for this one, because I'm not sure. I just want to address the email that we had gotten regarding storage in the right-of-way. So whenever that comes up, like, can you address what their concerns and why the ordinance was was developed on that way? So that is my question.
Thank you, Alder. Megan, here's you and and Megan, you'll address it.
Yeah, that is related to the right-of-way and I can address that when we touch on that item. One sixteen.
Thank you. Alda Carter?
Thank you. And this is to Megan again, and we can discuss it when we get to one sixteen. But, um, uh, when Nicholas made his public comment about someone setting up the streetery in front of his establishment, I want to talk to you more about enforcement on that when we get to that. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you.
Alda Foster question?
Yeah, thank you. Just wanted to do a follow-up on the noise question or the amplified sound. So Alder Benford asked about a drum kit. In terms of the one that we're looking at right now, it says that no amplified music is allowed except in a couple locations. Does it really speak in any way to whether, I guess, other kind of music, drum kits, et cetera? Does it speak to that? Or is it? I guess, does this change in any way if there were a a restaurant that had a parking lot? Does this permit some kind of music that's not permitted today? I guess is maybe the question.
Uh, the answer is is no. It's effectively not a change.
Okay, so today someone could make some music and if neighbors complained, we'd fund for disturbing the police or disturbing the peace and would kind of address it as they normally would and nothing really changes with with this then?
I mean, they they could. The the, what it comes down to is is all, except for those three districts that you noted, the 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 use is a conditional use, so it goes through a conditional use process. Uh, and but the and and there's a process anytime there's alcohol service to extend the license premise there. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, well, for like amplified sound, but in terms of the, I think the concern was maybe loud non-amplified music. And as I'm understanding, there's nothing in this proposed change that would increase what is permitted in regards to non-amplified loud music, that that essentially is a is a no change. So I guess that's what I'm looking for clarification on.
I think that's true.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any further questions for staff on item nineteen? Alder Benford, another question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mayor, and please indulge me, Matt. So with this ordinance change, we talked about, you know, my my biggest concern is sound and neighbors being impacted. Is there a way we could, and and maybe this is a substitute, but how would it impact the intent of this if we were to say there could be no drum kits?
I think that could be fine. That those could be words that are added. I think you could say, you could say it might be more consistent than picking an instrument to to just say that there'll be no music, period, either amplified or not. Because basses and other instruments and may have a similar resonance to a to a drum kit. Tambourines, maracas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue with questions. So on item nineteen, it has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to offer an amendment that I have emailed Alders and and the mayor and city attorney. Do I need to email the clerk too?
Yes, please.
And which address do I use for that?
I've actually got it already, Alder. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And so everyone has that language and I can read that if I can find it again. Uh, yes, so for, it's simply adding a sentence that says fencing may exceed forty-two inches in height if approved by the zoning administrator or designee. And that would be added to the end of MGO twenty-eight one fifty-one, outdoor eating areas temporary associated with food and beverage establishments clause C.
Is there a second? Alder Lemmer, is that a second? All right, so Alder Heck will move. Alder Lemmer was second. Alder Heck, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Yes, just briefly. This is something that actually Plan Commission approved this amendment and it just didn't quite make it through the system. So we're adding it at the last minute. It's it's just a simple request to have fencing on these private areas be taller than forty-eight inches if staff agrees that it's appropriate.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any discussion on Alder Heck's amendment? Seeing none. Alder Carter on Alder Heck's amendment?
Yeah, I just have a quick question for him. When I'm looking at this and when you say staff, are we talking zoning?
Uh, Alder, the text of the amendment specifies the zoning administrator or designee.
I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any further discussion on Alder Heck's amendment? Seeing none. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of Alder Heck's amendment? Seeing no objection. That amendment is adopted into the underlying motion, which is to adopt with conditions and as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item nineteen with conditions and as amended? Seeing no objection, item nineteen is adopted. Uh, and that brings us to item twenty. Item twenty is Legis star six nine five one eight, amending the city of Madison official map to establish map reservations for future streets in the city of Madison to connect ShopCo Drive and Pancrat Street, consistent with recommendations in the adopted Oscar Meyer special area plan. Uh, on item twenty, we did not have any registrants. So I will not open a public hearing. But this is one of a number of items, again, related to the Oscar Meyer special area plan. And I would like to ask planning staff to just orient us to these items and perhaps give us an overview. And then we can go from there. And Bill Frilling is here with us.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I was just going to ask if Dan McCullough might be able to share his screen, so step ahead of me here. So, um, the agenda items twenty through twenty-nine are a number of proposed ordinance amendments aimed at implementing the Oscar Meyer special area plan. And so we have about five or six slides here to try to make sense of all the pieces. So the the Oscar Meyer special area plan was adopted by the common council in July twenty twenty in the wee hours of the morning, as you have already heard from some of the from some of the members of the public. And, you know, the the city adopts these plans so that as incremental decisions are made over time, those incremental decisions are all working together towards the city's desired future of the area. And those those incremental decisions might be new streets or infrastructure or private development proposals. But when these plans are adopted, they become the city's official policy. This is what we want. This is what we all are all working towards this common vision. And so just to start out by saying actions on these items tonight don't change the plan. This plan is is adopted and that's what we're working for. But rather, these are some proactive steps to 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 further implementation of some of the plan recommendations. And those are really in two categories. They're official mapping and proactive rezoning. So here is a a page from the adopted plan that shows a proposed street pattern. There's a zoom in of an area that we've been talking a lot about. So this shows a proposed street pattern and proposed land use. So this is what was adopted as a supplement to the city's comprehensive plan. The the green area kind of on the the left there, thank you, Dan, is the sixteen acre park that you've heard heard referred to. But I want to start off really talking about the official mapping because that's what really provides the framework for these other pieces to fall into place. So they're not really, you know, it's kind of hard to change one without a ripple effect through some of the other recommendations of the plan. So so official mapping is a tool that cities have that that can identify areas where future streets, in this case, future streets are proposed to go. And this is a tool that we we don't use on every street. We only kind of pull it out occasionally when there are critical connections that need to be made. And in this instance, there are two street connections that you can see here. So the the kind of the north-south one there connects Ruskin on the south to Huxley on the north. And then the the east-west connects Ross Street through and to Coolidge. So it doesn't actually have a street connection with Coolidge, but that's kind of the alignment. And and it goes through the Oscar Meyer site, which is, if you see the diagonal line kind of cutting across the middle of the of the map there, that is is a railroad track. So east of the railroad tracks is the actual Oscar Meyer site. West of the railroad tracks is the area that we've already heard a lot about this evening. And so those are, those are two sixty-six foot wide streets. And these, when a street is officially mapped, it does not build the street. That does not mean that's the exact location of the street. Sometimes those can shift a little bit at the time of plating, when more, you know, you get to more of an engineering level of detail. But so these are sixty-six foot wide strips and the effect of official mapping is building permits cannot be issued in those areas. And so so it just is an assurance that a building is not going to be constructed in an area where we have a street plan to go through. And so so that's that's what we have here. And there's a couple important things to note about this. So basically, there are four points that need to connect. So Ruskin Street on the south, and Dan, if you could follow with your cursor. So Ruskin Street comes up from Commercial Avenue, stops right there. So that's where the street needs to pick up. Then it needs to connect up with with Huxley to the north. And so Huxley is an existing street, so we're trying to connect those existing streets. So there's traffic flow through the area. And then Ross Street already exists to the cul-de-sac that you can see. But we are, the plan, I should say, recommends that that be continued through to Packers. And there's like one place where that that can cross the railroad tracks to to get through there. And that's because trying to work around some of the existing buildings that likely will stay, you know, with whatever happens in the future of Oscar Meyer. So you have those four points. And because of the traffic geometrics and and the way those intersections have to line up, it kind of ride angles, that kind of dictates where those two streets cross. So so this has been a very well thought out street, working with traffic engineering and engineering on on the locations of these. But, you know, it's just implementing implementing a step of the plan. One thing that, well, maybe I'll show that on the on the next slide, Dan. So this are are the streets that are overlaid over in aerial photo to give you a little bit more of a context. And so a couple of things that I just wanted to be clear on. So there was, there has been mention of Carpse's environmental corridor. And part of the the corridor that was referred to, so if you see the parking lot, Dan, can you point out the parking lot, please? Thank you. So that's a surface parking lot. And there is a constructed drainage ditch alongside of or on the south side of that that is included in, is now included, recently included in Carpse's environmental corridor. And so that's kind of where And so that's kind of where the main area where the streets are going through that people refer to before. And we have a communication from, from Carpse staff that, you know, that says the intent of those environmental corridors is not to prevent necessary extension or construction of transportation facilities. And so, you know, obviously, we have to meet all, all the requirements like we will. But, you know, I just wanted to be clear on the implications of that. And also, there is, there's a stand of very old oak trees. Thank you, Dan. And that's the area that, that there's a potential archaeological site. And, you know, there are archaeological sites all over the city. And so, you know, so the city would meet all, all requirements. This is not an uncommon thing for the city in building streets. You know, and I understand that city engineering even has an archaeologist on retainer because this comes up often enough. And so, so we're working around those trees. We're working around, you know, our understanding of the extents of the archaeological sites to put in these street reservations. And the final thing I wanted to note on this is the building to the south on Ruskin Street. So this would, this street does go through a corner of that building. We could move that, where that curve bends, a little bit to the north to, to totally miss that building. But again, this is a reservation for the future. So this does not do anything to, to that building, except they cannot get building permits in the future if they were to build in the area that would be officially mapped. But it doesn't build the street, you know, and the street would not be built until development warranted it. So that's kind of the story on official mapping. So the, the, I guess, from my understanding of it, the presumed motion to, to revert, refer item 21 would have these streets, you know, they would not be adopted at this point, but that would be considered at some future date. But this is important because these streets kind of provide the framework for the proposed zoning districts that are following some of the, you know, and some of these other ordinances. So Dan, if you want to go to the next map, please. So, so the map on the left, these are three maps. So hopefully you could tell that. So, and it's kind of zoomed in to this area, this northern kind of part of the plan. So the map on the left is the existing zoning. The map in the middle has the proposed zonings, and the little numbers in there refer to the agenda items on the council agenda. So hopefully that's easier to follow. And then the, the map on the right is what the proposed zoning is. And so, so the map in the middle and the map on the right are the same. The difference is one refer, has the agenda item numbers and one has the, the actual zoning district. So you can see that the legal descriptions on those, those parcels proposed to be rezoned that are, that are adjacent to the officially mapped streets, the legal descriptions in those ordinance goes to the center line of those, those proposed officially mapped streets. So it all kind of ties together. So Dan, can you go the next one, please? And so this, the plan doesn't all fit neatly on one page. So this is kind of the southern part, and particularly a proposed rezoning here along Pennsylvania Avenue. So this purple area is just kitty corner across from the upcoming Public Market. So these are some older warehouses there, and that is proposed to be rezoned to regional mixed use. So I know we heard a lot tonight about the 16 acres. And, and just to, that's true, but just to give a little bit of a refresher for those of you who, who weren't there, and I think that's a number of, of this council, that, thank you, Dan. The, the proposed, the draft plan that went before the council in July of 2020 proposed a 14-acre park. And so at the council meeting, there were a couple motions made to expand the park. And because what you see in front of you is the plan and the proposed land uses, each of those weren't really just random, let's throw up numbers and see what sticks. There were logical boundaries. You know, if we extend the park this way to this street, that will get us this many acres. And that's, that's how we got to the 16 acres. So the, the park in, as a plan was proposed, was 14 acres. We were asked if, if we wanted to try to find some, you know, some additional parkland, what, what would make sense, a direction to expand? And, and planning staff said, well, to the south. And so that's where we picked up two more acres. And you talked, we heard tonight already the reference to 702 Ruskin and rezoning, you know, proposing to rezone part of that. That just happened to be two acres. So 14 plus two is how we got to 16 acres. So 16 acres was never the, oh, let's find 16 acres. But that's kind of what became the, the narrative. And I think it's fair to say the expectation of, of people that the park be 16 acres. So 702 Ruskin, we, we received a certified protest petition for that. So, so that item will not be considered tonight because that, that's item 26. Because the zoning code requires that when we receive a certified protest petition, in the time that we did, and we just got it yesterday, that it, that it needs to be considered at, at the following council meeting. So, so one final word on this is, before I shut up, is the, you know, on the council floor, there was an amendment to the resolution adopting this plan, again, like at 3 o'clock in the morning, that, that directed staff to prepare a map to proactively rezone property in the planning area consistent with the land use recommendations that you're seeing here in the plan. And so that's what you have before you in a number of pieces. So for instance, if, if some are all of these, hopefully not all of them, but if some of these, you know, proactive rezonings did not happen, that is still the plan. And so until very recently, we did not do proactive rezonings. So we would acquire parkland consistent with our plans, either as opportunities came up, if you're familiar with Ed, Ed Cleef Park. That took years of buying houses as opportunities presented themselves before we finally got a park. Or the city, if we wanted to be more proactive, we could approach a property owner and try to acquire the park. So by not, if only the 14 acres of the park were rezoned now, that does not mean that the city's plan and intention is still not to get those additional two acres at some point in the future. And so, so some, I've seen a lot of chatter about, you know, if we don't pre-zone this 16 acres now to conservancy, then, then we're losing it, or we have to find it somewhere else. And that's just not really kind of what our, you know, kind of our way we have operated in the past goes. We've, that's still our intention. We would still look to expand that way. We would still look to get 16 acres. We just wouldn't be pre-zoning it right now if, if that were not to prevail. So, so hopefully that helped make sense and not confuse things more. I just wanted to mention that Dan McCullough is here. Dan has been working on this. He was a project manager for this plan. He knows a lot of, a lot more of the details than I do. And we also have Ann Frywall and Lisa Lassinger from Parks here. They can ask, answer questions. We went and walked the, the site, including the stand of trees with Alder Abbas yesterday. And so they are well familiar with the site as well. So I will stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. One piece that you didn't speak to is the first item before us, item 20. And so I just want to confirm that this item speaks to, and the map that we're currently looking at, north of Aberg Ave, mapping that street through the pink area. Is that correct?
Thank you. And that, the recommendation is that that be referred. We are working on the exact alignment with a major property owner there who is MG&E. So it was referred at the Board of Public Works, and it's going back there, I think, next week. So everything, you know, seems to be going totally smoothly with that. We have some agreement on some alignment, so that's going back to Board of Public Works and Plan Commission. And that piece will be back before you shortly. So thank you for calling that to my attention.
Thank you. All right. So let's, because some of these issues I expect to, might take us a little while, let's take this item by item with questions for staff. So are there questions for staff on item 20, which is again, that, that northern portion, north of Aberg, the connection between ShopCo and Pancrat's? Alder Halverson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The question for Mr. Frilling regarding the officially mapped roads. Just wanted to clarify, we do officially map these. It essentially doesn't build the road, like you said, but it does say that there can no be, they, the, the property owner can't be build, put building permits or can't do building permits. Is that true? Just to confirm that?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. And then are we compensating the private property owners for that officially mapped road if they can no longer build on that?
We are not. Sorry.
Either way, Dan keeps raising his hand, but if, Dan, feel free to chime in. But you do have to unmute yourself.
Okay. Yes, my understanding of the, the official mapping process, we would not generally compensate the property owner. One of the, the reasons I believe it's put in state statute is to effectively discourage private investment on areas that would likely become roads. So I guess there sometimes are instances where property owners can obtain building permits. However, if the city were to then acquire that land through an eminent domain process, we would only need to compensate the property owner via value of the land before the improvement was, was made. So we are usually, we are usually doing this on properties we anticipate change in the future. And it's a, it's a good way of getting those primary connections where we might not have other methods of doing that, such as a subdivision, for example, could require the dedication.
So just to clarify, Dan, while we don't compensate property owners in the official mapping process, when we go to acquire the property to become a public street, then the property owner would receive compensation?
I guess it depends on the instance. Typically, it would occur through a subdivision or a CSM process, in which case we would typically expect that the right-of-way and the infrastructure be built by the developer. That is kind of our standard operating procedure. Developers are required to put in the infrastructure necessary to support their developments. There might be some instances where, you know, it's clear that the infrastructure is supporting adjacent developments, not necessarily specific to that. You know, that's kind of on a case-by-case basis. I don't know the exact compensation policy of the city. That's probably a better question for engineer.
Thank you. Alder Halverson?
That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on item 20? Alder Bitiver?
I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this point, but I guess the question is, what, under what circumstances does the city have the right to essentially create eminent domain on private property, aside from a, a road plan like this?
That's probably a question for Attorney Haas or for our city engineer.
If Rob wants to weigh in, otherwise Kate Smith is also available, and I think that she's looked into this a little bit.
Rob or Kate?
So a lot of this comes down to our patience, right? So if we want to see that a road is actually built and development isn't coming soon enough for us, then we would, we would move to acquire that property. And the city can, can put that on a map, and the Common Council can, can pass a relocation order. And once that's happened, then of course we would compensate the property owners for the value of the property that's, that's taking place. So we would have broad authority to, to acquire a street right-of-way and, and build a road if that was the city's desire. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I think my concern is, to me, that answer feels like at any time the city could say, well, we want to build a road here, and so therefore we want to take your property. And that feels very scary to me. So, so maybe you can bring my blood pressure down a little bit.
Well, obviously, you're the Common Council. You have to decide if that's in the public's interest to, to take that action or not. But absent that authority to be able to do that, it'd be very difficult to, for the city to see many of our plans through to completion. So you might have a, a mile of the road that you're getting plotted by a developer, and unfortunately, the last 100 feet goes through a, a property that's not in that development, for instance. So it's a, it is a tool that municipalities use, and it is a, it is something that we should use carefully and make sure that's really something we want. But it's up to the Common Council in the end, and the mayor and Common Council in the end, to approve these actions. So you, as a council, have that authority and, and can make that decision whether it's in the public's best interest to go forward with that or not.
Alder Foster?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if Attorney Smith is on the call and may be able to join us as well. I just want to help make sure everyone understands that what's in front of us is not use of eminent domain. It's not actually taking, and really, as I understand it, the intent here is, is really mostly a communication, a public communication that this is the plan. And, and maybe Attorney Smith can clarify this, but my understanding is that someone can actually apply for a building permit here. It does, it's a, it's a different, slightly different process. We would, generally, we're expecting that people are not going to build there, but there is still a path there if we wanted to. But basically, that this, this, we're saying, this is our plan, so don't build a building here unless you, you apply and we really say yes. So yeah, maybe I'll, I'll stop there and just maybe Attorney Smith could give some more details on this process, because I know it's complicated.
We'll go to Attorney Smith, but I, I do want to just caution us from going down too much of a rabbit hole on eminent domain and official mapping. Attorney Smith?
Thank you. Yes, so Alder Foster is correct. No one is taking any land with this yet. And the, if there is a building permit that would be counter to the official map, there's a process that it can be, the denial can be appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So there is a process. And ACA John Strange wrote an official map memo that's pretty comprehensive and is attached in the Legisar file if there are any questions that you would think of later, also after the meeting. He answers it pretty clearly.
Thank you. Alder Foster, no more questions. Okay, so just to, to lower Alder Bitiver's blood pressure, you know, we start with a plan which gets adopted. After much discussion, we go through an official mapping process. And then generally, we're not using eminent domain. We're relying on the developer to build infrastructure. But it is a tool that, that sometimes is necessary, but in this case, not under consideration. And are there further questions for staff on item 20? Seeing none. Seeing none. President Abbas, a motion on item twenty.
Move motion to refer.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer item twenty. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that item will be referred, um, back to the Plan Commission. Takes us to item twenty-one, which is Legislaw six nine five one nine, amending the City of Madison official map to establish map reservations for future streets in the City of Madison consistent with recommendations in the adopted Oscar Meyer special area plan. This, I believe, is the main, uh, map that, um, Bill was focused on. Um, and we can bring that up again if people want it. So let's go to questions for staff on item twenty-one. If there are any. Seeing no, oh, Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have a question for Matt Walker. If he is with us. He is.
He is. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Matt Alders, uh, received this email and we heard some comments from Kevin McDonald about this prospective development. That, uh, I think this, this item pertains to, in their opinion, because they need to know where the streets are going to be before they proceed with their development. Can you, can you just kind of, uh, describe, um, you know, is from your point of view, uh, if the scenario that was described is likely timing wise in terms of the WEDA component and other financing components? Does that seem, uh, like it's, uh, a, a reasonable assumption that they need to know, uh, how the streets will be laid out at this point?
Uh, sure. So, uh, just for a little history, the, this team approached, um, city staff, uh, late last year, um, specifically about doing a four percent tax credit transaction. Um, and they, and for that, they, they were banking on the, the project being in a qualified census tract per, per sort of HUD and WEDA guidelines. And they had a, a narrow window where this site was in a qualified census tract, but that designation was going away. So they worked with, um, with us and the city attorney's office to, to talk through different ways they could do the bond issuance. It might've gone through the CDA. They end up ultimately going with WEDA. Um, but we were aware that they had this timing issue then. They needed to sort of lock in pieces of their financing and, and make a certain amount of progress. Um, so that's been an issue that we're, we're well aware of. That's, that is definitely true. Um, and then because it's four percent tax, uh, tax rate transactions are, are typically larger transactions. So this is actually probably going to be multiple buildings. So in order to sort of lay out their site plan, they need to know where they can put those buildings. So, um, I, I think, as has been discussed tonight, the reservation tells us generally where those will be. But then through the subdivision process, we might move those, change the geometry a little bit. But they generally need to know, are they going to have a, a pad that they can fit, you know, three buildings on versus two, those sorts of things? So they, they need to know that nothing major is going to change, um, so they can proceed through land use approvals over the course of the year. Um, as well as be able to, to know how many units they're going to have because they're going to have to apply to the city for funds and, um, work through all of those, those pieces. So I, I think Kevin was accurate that things were doable, um, but they don't have a lot of slack in their timeline. If we're going to have multi-month delays, uh, it's probably not possible for them to hit that window to be in a qualified census tract for WEDA.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for staff on item twenty-one? Alder Bitiver?
Just curious, um, what would be the impact of not mapping the Ruskin Street map or road at this time?
Who would like to answer that?
Um, I'll take a stab. Uh, Bill, feel free to jump in. Um, so the, the Ruskin Huxley Roth Coolidge official mapping, uh, the impact of not officially mapping those at this time would, would say we don't have the reservation. Um, eventually, essentially what it will do is we'll say we have no area, there's basically no prohibition on, of building location on the site. Uh, it was by, absent rezonings, it would still be zoned industrial general. Uh, a developer could build an industrial building tomorrow without a public process through a, a permitted use site plan review. Assuming that they would still pursue redevelopments, uh, that redevelopment would be, um, reviewed in context of the plan and the, you know, our adopted plans are the basis of our, uh, subdivision, uh, requirements of our conditional use requirements. Um, so the expectation would be, you know, this would be the starting point. Um, and I think these streets have been extensively vetted. Um, we've gone through a lot of work with TE to work through these alignments. There really isn't a lot of slack in location when we're trying to accomplish what we are. But, yeah, so they would need to come forward with the development proposal. Uh, planning staff would re- review that development for consistency with the plan and, and recommend, um, to Plan Commission with that in mind.
Alder Foster?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just one follow-up question. Um, I think a combination of what we heard from Dan and Matt. So in the, the, from the member of the public that we heard from, from the, the developer, if we didn't have, uh, official mapping on the books or, or for proactive zoning, they would sort of like, like they would have in earlier times, put forward a, a proposal with land that they control, um, including potentially a, a new street, uh, similar to where it's recommended in, um, in the adopted plan. And they would move through the, the approval processes. Um, I guess like they, like they would in any other case. Um, is there anything that is, um, maybe this is for Matt, in, in relation to the four percent component or the financing component? Is there anything that requires or that sort of hinges on either official mapping or, um, or any changes to zoning, understanding that it would kind of obviously always be better to have some assurance, um, to have those things in place? But is, is there anything that's stopping them from, I guess, moving forward on the timeline that they're trying to move forward if we don't pass those two things?
I mean, Dan, feel free to, to jump in here, but no, WEDA is not looking for that. I think what the development team is looking for is this, is certainty because they're going to need to know exactly what their costs are for infrastructure and exactly sort of what they can, what they can build. Um, I think that's what they're looking for. But, and Dan, feel free to jump in and add to that.
Sure. And, and the streets that are recommended for official mapping are effectively directly out of the plan. These are the, the primary streets, you know, kind of when we do these plans, we think about, I think really about two categories or hierarchies of streets. You know, first is those ones that we are, create the really important connections that link neighborhoods, that link, uh, people. And then there's that second tier, which is really breaking down those super blocks into, um, block sizes that are more pedestrian friendly. Those have a lot more flexibility, you think, you know, those can be handled a lot of different ways. Um, the only real difference in this, um, and I'm sorry, I'm in anticipating how long this meeting would be. I came to work and our super efficient lights turn off after a couple of minutes. So, um, it's, it's a lovely space for a meeting and I thought it'd be better than, um, my dining room table, uh, knowing the history of this process. Um, um, so yeah, the only real differences, um, and maybe I'll put this, uh, put the, I'll share the screen again. Um, we shifted the, uh, the, kind of the spring point of the curve of Roth to the east. Um, just, uh, we went out there with, uh, the city forester to look at the, the oaks. Um, there, the oaks were fully protected from the previous iteration, but there were some shag bar hickories that were in good quality. We thought, you know, these would be great feature in a public park. And if we shift the alignment slightly, we can accommodate that. Um, this is largely the same with just some slight, um, you know, bake, just bake, make sure it's, it meets TE's, uh, tangent and, and curve radius requirements. Um, as again, Huxley is, is the primary street moving north of Aberg. It connects up with, um, Sherman Middle School. It's one of our kind of great bike corridors. When you think about those parallel corridors, those continuous corridors, parallel to our major streets, those are great for bikes. Um, again, Roth Street to Coolidge, it's really about the only place we can move, uh, that connection to the south. There is a legal crossing at Ross, but it, it would just, it, it would not be safe from a crossing, uh, rail crossing perspective. It would work from a, a traffic engineering perspective. Um, so it's very, very similar, very slight differences, uh, from the adopted plan.
Could I maybe just, uh, clarify? So if the, um, so if developer wanted to proceed, sort of do their design work, submit an application for a, for a project and use basically what we're looking at tonight, the proposed official mapping, which is, you know, a slight, slight change from the adopted plan. They could, they could do that if we ultimately, then, then like Plan Commission primarily, maybe Board of Public Works would review that. Proposal would look at what they're proposing for sort of streets related to their proposal. And we either recommend approval or not, we would do that as a common council. And it, and like none of that really hinges on whether we, whether we officially map it or not at this point. Is that true?
Yes, they would, they would need to subdivide the property and any subdivision would need, uh, council approval, my understanding. I'm, I'm not on the development review side, but, uh, they may need, again, they might need some, uh, future rezoning. Um, you know, kind of some of the, the challenge of this is trying to move it in the direction of the plan. But we also acknowledge that we don't have a hundred percent knowledge of what, uh, development proposals will come forward. Um, so there's, there's a strong likelihood that, that council would see this again.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other questions for staff on item twenty-one? If not, then, uh, President Abbas, a motion please.
Move motion to refer it to May tenth meeting. May tenth.
Sorry, second.
Moved and seconded to refer to the May tenth common council meeting? Is there a discussion on item twenty-one? Uh, Alder Abbas?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I had an opportunity, I was back in Pakistan on vacation as, uh, to see my family. I came back and I left after the Plan Commission meeting and came back and, and had a detailed discussion with the community. And there is a strong desire to save all sixteen acre land. And in the presence of what happened at Plan Commission, I look into various amendments and how we could make sure that sixteen acre land is logged for, uh, open area. The, the attorney office I met with on, uh, on Monday, I believe, I met with, uh, a Friday or Monday, I forget now, I'm so tired, with attorney office. And the advice was if I really want to change any official mapping to protect the lands or environmental corridor, this need to be referred and Plan Commission have to review it. On top of that, the engineering department need at least, uh, a couple of weeks to do that work. And they are totally swamped and it's not fair at the last hour asking them to do those changes. So I talked to Ralph Phillips, if it possible, if May tenth is a good timeline, if engineering department can create an official mapping away from what is proposed in front of common councils. At least we have an option, uh, in front of us in a, in a way rather than verbal. I can explain in detail, but it's really complex matter. Some of, uh, our colleagues have a good understanding of official mapping and zoning and some of us is learning. So it's important to have, uh, uh, the amendment in a way which have a legal description. And to get the legal description, I need time to work with community as well as with developers and the staff. And originally it is, uh, referred to July and I want to be thoughtful about the developer. Uh, I do think so they can still move forward. It should not stop them. Uh, I want to be thoughtful and with that thought, I think so, the May tenth is a good time as part of my discussion with Ralph Phillips that could be done and can bring back for discussion. So that's why I am putting this amendment forward to refer it. And that will give us a good time for commu- work with the community on environmental corridor and try to create, uh, a plan which protect our environment as well as create housing at the same time. So it could be a win-win for the community. So I will encourage my colleagues to support the refer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any further discussion on item twenty-one? Seeing none, the motion is to refer to the May tenth meeting. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of referral and that item is referred to May tenth. That will take us to item twenty-two, which is Legislaw six nine four nine seven, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at ten ten North Street. Now, on item twenty-two, uh, are there any questions for staff? Alder Heck?
Thank you. Um, I'm wondering if, I, I think Bill was sharing his screen. If before each of these items, could we look at that map that had the agenda items on the map? Yeah, perfect. So this is, uh, number twenty with, twenty-two, sorry.
Item twenty-two.
Great. Thank you.
Right. So on item twenty-two, any further questions for staff? Not, President Abbas, a motion?
Move motion to adopt.
Okay.
Moved and seconded to adopt item twenty-two. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item twenty-two. It takes us to item twenty-three, which is Legislaw six nine four nine eight, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning of property at twenty oh three Aberg Ave, nine ten Oscar Ave, twenty-two twenty-eight Myrtle Street, twenty-two thirty-one Myrtle Street and portions of twenty oh two and twenty-one fifty Commercial Avenue. Uh, on item twenty-three, again, you can refer to the map, uh, to see what we're looking at. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item twenty-three? Seeing no objection, item twenty-three is adopted. Takes us to item twenty-four, which is Legislaw six nine five one seven, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning of property located at twenty oh seven Roth Street. On item twenty-four, are there any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for staff, President Abbas?
Move motion to refer to May tenth council.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to the May tenth common council meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral to May tenth? Seeing no objection, that item is referred to May tenth. That takes us to item twenty-five, which is Legislaw six nine five three five, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning of property located at eleven fifteen O'Neil Ave and eighteen ten Roth Street. On item twenty-five, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, President Abbas?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item twenty-five. Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, item twenty-five is adopted. Item twenty-six is Legislaw six nine five three eight, an alternate, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at seven oh two Ruskin Street. Um, on this, uh, President Abbas, let's just go to a motion.
Yep. Move motion to refer to April nineteenth common council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer to April nineteenth. Uh, Alder Foster?
Yeah, just wanted a clarification that this is a, a different day than the rest of them. Um, do we, does that need to be earlier? Does it need to be?
Although this is the item that's, that has the protest petition?
Are we able to also move it to the May meeting so that it's all happening still together?
Um, Attorney Smith, can you speak to that?
Under the MGO, it has to be referred to the next council meeting, which is April 19th, but on the April 19th, you could refer it to May 10th. But it does need to go to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so then the motion is to refer to the April 19th Common Council Meeting. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing no objection, that vote we recorded and that item will be referred. That takes us to item 27, which is Legis star 69539, creating sections of the, Madison General ordinances to change the zoning, of portions of 1741 and 1825 Commercial Avenue and all of, 2001 and 2125 Commercial Avenue. And 2401, 2413, 2417 and 2510 Pennsylvania Avenue. On item 27, this is, I think, a different map. Waiting. This is the map.
It's this map, it's the pink south of Commercial Avenue.
Oh, okay.
At the very bottom.
Thank you. And so on item 27, are there questions for staff? Seeing none, President Abbas a motion please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 27. Property located at 1902 East Johnson Street and 2010 through 2030 Pennsylvania Avenue. Now, this is the other map. Are there any questions for staff on item 28? Seeing none, President Abbas a motion on item 28?
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 28, is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item 28. Item 29 is Legis star 69541, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to change the zoning at, 1909 Aberg Avenue. Are there questions on item 29? Seeing none, President Abbas.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt, is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we're recording unanimous vote in favor of item 29. Item 30 is Legis star 69965, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to amend, plan development at 70740 Regent Street. We're on to something completely different now, folks. On item 30. Are there, let's get a motion then first, President Abbas.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 30, are there questions? Or is there any discussion on item 30, Alder Foster?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, it says recommend to adopt, it looks like there were conditions recommended, is this with those conditions or?
That's a good catch, Alder. It's not detailed, but it probably should be with conditions. I don't know if planning staff can comment on that. The, the notes from Plan Commission contain conditions. So without objection, we'll take the motion as being to adopt with conditions. Alright, so the motion is to adopt with conditions, or is there further discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item 30, we'll go to item 31, which is, Alder Carter, we're almost there.
So I just wanted you to know, the last sentence does say with above conditions.
Yeah, that's the, that's the record from Plan Commission. If you look at the top, it's the motion. The recommendation to council, it just left off that, usually it says with conditions. And so then on item 31, which is Legis star 70198, amending sections of the Madison General ordinances to allow for residential uses on the ground floor, of buildings within the lesser of 40% or 40 feet in mixed use and multifamily buildings on specified downtown streets. And if you know what that means, congratulations. On item 31, President Abbas a motion please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item 31, are there questions for staff? Is there discussion? Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item 31. And we will move on. Hold on, have to shuffle pages here. To item 45.
Would it be possible to take a five minute break?
Alder Vitter, would you like to move a five minute recess?
I would love to move a five minute recess.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded to take a five minute recess, is there any objection? Seeing none, it is 9:28, we will be back in five minutes and we are in recess. We're about a minute out from coming back. Alright. We are past the five minute mark, so I'll ask Alders to come back and turn their cameras back on. And, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Alder Vervier?
Here.
Alder Vitter? I see you there, Alder Vitter, thank you. Alder Wihelia?
Here.
President Abbas? I see you there, thank you. Alder Alboras?
Here.
Thank you. Alder Benford?
Present.
Thank you, Alder Bennett? Alder Carter? I see you, Alder Carter. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Thank you, Alder Curry?
Here.
Thank you, Alder Evers? I'll come back to Alder Evers. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Here.
Thank you, Alder Foster?
Here.
Thank you, Alder Furman?
Present.
Thank you, Alder Halverson?
Present.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Present.
Thank you, Alder Heck?
Here.
Thank you, Alder Lemmer?
Here.
Thank you, Vice President Martin?
Here.
Thank you, Alder Miyazi?
Present.
Thank you, and then Alder Evers?
Yes, here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we have quorum. Thank you. Alright, so now we are on item 45, which is Legis star 69379, a substitute, creating sections of the Madison General ordinances to create the roadway cafe permit to allow for the expansion of licensed sidewalk cafes into the roadway, and amending various sections of the Madison General ordinances accordingly. So we're back to the streeteries. And let's start first, President Abbas with a motion please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Now, there were a couple of questions for staff on this item, so Megan, do you want to start, with just addressing those questions that we had already and then we'll see if there's any more?
Uh, yeah, so I think the first question, question was related to storage. Is that correct, the first one, okay. And staff had a long, multiple conversations and really tried to figure out, some options to keep outdoor storage. We did have some cafes that were allowed, it is allowed as it's proposed in the roadway. One of the main reasons that we, proposed keeping equipment out in the roadway was to maintain that space so it wasn't parked in, on a regular basis, when cafe operators came to put their items back out in the roadway, and to maintain that space. The sidewalk has a little different use and the way that people operate. In the mall concourse, we're proposing that cafe equipment be brought in overnight, as it has been historically. And that is, at least in my time, the way that it has always been, that cafes are required to bring in equipment nightly. And that is really due to the mall maintenance cleaning schedule that happens, so the mall maintenance, the, actually the area pays special assessments, to pay for the mall concourse crew to come and clean those sidewalks on a regular basis. So that is one major piece, is to allow them to do the work that is being paid for by the property owners. Additionally, there was some concern for safety when it came to equipment, especially things not being secured properly. As we saw in the civil unrest, we saw some items being used to damage other property, both city property and private property. So that was a concern. We did see a number of items being locked to city amenities such as trees. And there's some concern for our street trees and making sure that they're safe. And they are on the terrace where most of our cafes are located in the downtown area. And then additionally, with special events, you know, we had to, be mindful of how special events operate, especially within the downtown area. In this proposal, we are proposing that outside of the mall concourse, so outside of the downtown area, that for an additional fee at $5 per square foot versus three, that businesses could pay a higher price to maintain, keeping their equipment outside, but it would have to be securely stored and not to city amenities or other, items such as that. So, we had a long conversation about it and the big concern that people are expressing right now is specifically within the mall concourse area, about the equipment removal. We haven't heard, many concerns about it outside of the downtown area, but specifically within the mall concourse area. So within the long conversations that staff had and, and feedback and really trying to figure out how we can all use this space together, there's multiple uses. It was put forward to remove the equipment from the sidewalk area only. I guess one other piece I want to address about that is on Saturday mornings, as many of you are aware, we have the Dean County Farmers Market, on state property and across the street, we have our licensed food carts, art and craft vendors, along with the sidewalk cafes and merchant vendors. We do have already defined sidewalk cafes, I'm sorry, art and craft vending locations in where there are some sidewalk cafes, that if they don't bring in their equipment, we lose those art and craft vending sites, which are already then approved by the vending oversight committee for this upcoming year. Probably five sites would be potentially lost on Saturdays. We've had an uptick in people applying to the art and craft vendors, so that is another concern. It doesn't address the entire downtown, but we really have to look at that as a whole space, so that is, a number of reasons of why staff are proposing that items be removed from the, the sidewalk and terrace portion, but maintaining that infrastructure in the roadway to maintain that space so it doesn't get, parked in or floating, you know, other uses within the roadway. So that is the storage piece. So that is the storage piece. The second one was about enforcement. I think there was going to be, I don't think there was a full question on that. Alder Carter, I think you had mentioned that. Did you want to ask a full question, or do you want me just to touch on enforcement?
Well, my, my question was, are we going to be able to enforce that so that the streetery does not bleed into another unrelated business storefront?
Yeah, so as it relates to enforcement, over the last two years, under the emergency order, we were pretty hands-off, a lot of education, a lot of communication, but not any formal enforcement. We really had a hands-off approach during the pandemic. But as we're moving forward, that is one of the reasons why we propose that there is basically permission given from the tenant and the property owner. During the emergency order, it was written that we only needed to get permission from the tenant. In the situation where was talked about earlier, there was a tenant, but the tenant went away, and then the space was vacant. So we were able to extend with no permissions because it was only from the tenant. It did not have to do with the property owner. And I was reviewing those emails with the, the business that did expand, and it did make a comment that we could, we may need to address things if a new tenant came in to that location, but there's still no tenant in that location. So we would have addressed that if it would have, if there would have been a new tenant involved, but it was vacant. So going forward, though, there is those permissions written into this that the property owner and the tenant need to give permission before a cafe can laterally expand, and we would have enforcement authority over that to address that in the approval process. And if somebody is doing it without approvals, we would be able to enforce that as well. And we are, as staff, having conversations about how we will go about enforcement this upcoming season between myself and our street vending monitor, and really looking at how is the best approach, because this is all new. Really trying to make sure we're getting everyone educated up to speed, but then following through with enforcement if people are not following the requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Are there additional questions for staff on item 45? Seeing none. And then we have a motion and a second on the substitute. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 45? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 45. And we'll go on to item 114. 114 is Legis 69989, adopting the Vision Zero Action Plan and directing staff to implement the recommendations in the plan. Let's start, President Abbas, with a motion.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Are there questions for staff on item 114? Seeing no questions. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 114? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 114. And thank staff for staying with us. And move on to item 116. Yeah, give me a minute. Item 116 is Legis 69380, second substitute creating sections of the Madison General ordinances relating to sidewalk cafe and roadway cafe expansion licenses, et cetera. This is the next part of the streeteries. On item 116, President Abbas, a motion, please.
Move motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Any further questions for staff on this item? Alder Vitiver?
Um, so I'm reading, can you hear me, by the way? Okay, good. I'm reading the letter from the Business Central Improvement, Central Business Improvement District. I think we've kind of already addressed the storage and amenities piece, and it sounds like this is the path that we have because of these situations that we have in this special area. So my question is really about the final point, the tents, umbrellas, and awnings. Is there opportunity to modify the ordinance in such a way to meet the requests in this letter?
Uh, as it relates to tents and umbrellas, we actually are allowing 10 by 10 tents in, on the terrace and/or roadway if they, if the space does, if there's enough space to do so. So if the terrace is only five feet wide, a 10-foot, 10-foot by 10-foot umbrella is not going to fit. So we do need to make sure that the space accommodates it. But that is new. That is the first time, streetery did allow umbrellas on tents, so we do allow those. And we do, are now proposing this 10 by 10 tents. We are heads kind of stayed with that 10 by 10 because they're movable, they can be taken down if there's snow, rain, wind, things that are going to be dangerous to have them out. Larger tents need to be anchored. Many times that means actually either having very large, very large things to hold them down, or anchoring them into the ground, which is cement and the roadway. So this proposal is not allowing things to be fixed into the roadway and/or sidewalks. That would shift over into a whole different type of approval process with, with doing that. So larger tents are not being brought into this, and most of the spaces in the right-of-way, even with the use of the roadway, would not accommodate a large, like wedding-type tent that you might envision to have a huge dining area under. We did talk about permanent structures, or what would that look like, and we just couldn't get to a space that we could propose anything like that. The umbrella piece, I really think that has to do with signage, not the fact that people want to use umbrellas because they are allowed. What we're stating and what has always been in the ordinance is that umbrellas with logos are not allowed. And signage on tents is not allowed, and that has been a request because restaurants and bars get them free or very cheap from their distributors of their alcohol, and then they're littered with alcohol logoing. And that is really addressing the sign code, and that all comes from the sign code, which is related to state statute and a much deeper hill that we can't conquer, the state statutes in those pieces. And so we came back to what has always been status quo, no logos on umbrellas, allowing umbrellas, allowing tents, but only 10 by 10, and not anything larger. Some of our businesses that had larger square footage wanted to put huge 40 by 40-foot, or 20 by 40-foot tents up for specific weekends. They potentially could do that through a streetness permit or some other way, but that would really be a special event and would change the operations on what they're looking at for their private, more private dining, as opposed to a large event that does put up those types of tents and has the space across the whole streets. So while it is not exactly what the operators are looking at, it does provide them with more opportunities than they've had in the past. I know that a couple of operators brought up smoking under tents, and they're like, why can't we? It's under an umbrella, not a tent. The answer is, it's the fire code. And we were in line with what the fire code is, even though, and that says no smoking under tents. Umbrellas are different because they don't have, they're just, they're just different than a tent. Although we are putting, we did put forward in this that there can be no walls on the tents, it's only the, only the awning part on the top, especially for sightlines and other, you know, safety features. And during COVID, it was certainly an environmental safety feature. And so to be proactive in case there's other things that come up, continuing with that as well. So like I said, it's not hitting on what everybody was looking for, but I do think it got us closer to more opportunities for people than they'd had in, in the past.
Thank you, Alder. Any other questions for staff on item 116? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item 116? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item 116. And we will move on to item 122. All right, item 122 is Legis 70641, amending sections of the Madison General ordinances and repealing and recreating subchapter 41G. And on item 122, and the request is for additional referrals. And so let's go, well, President Abbas, do you want to just make that motion?
Move motion to do additional referrals.
Second.
Moved and seconded for additional referrals to Economic Development Committee on 420 and Housing Strategy Committee on 428. And is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of those additional referrals? Seeing no objection. Those referrals will be added. And that takes us to item 164, which is our closed session. All right, so President Abbas, do you want to take us into closed session, please?
Move motion to go in a closed session. The closed session, the common council will go into closed session when considering agenda item number 164 under Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851C, which provides for closed sessions of public bodies in certain circumstances and read as follows. Considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has to reduce or exercises responsibility.
So that's a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Right, second.
Moved and seconded to go into closed session. This requires a roll call vote. All those in favor of going into closed session, aye. Those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Vitiver?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Wehelia?
Aye.
Aye. President Abbas?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Alboris?
Yes.
Yes. Alder Benford?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Carter? I'm sorry, could you say again, Alder Carter? I didn't hear.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Figaroa Cole?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Foster? Aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Halverson?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Lemmer?
Aye.
Aye. Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Aye. Alder Miyazi?
Aye.
Aye. And that is 20 ayes.
Thank you. So we're going to do-
I'm sorry, Mayor, do you need me for the closed session or to hang around in case you need me after?
Um, unfortunately, I think we do need you to hang around because we'll have a couple of introductions from the floor after. And I think it's up to you whether you want to leave us for the closed session. I don't think you're necessary for it.
I'll leave for the closed session. Thank you. I'll see you in a little bit.
And then, so similarly, for any other staff who are not relevant to item 164, which is the common council chief of staff position, you're welcome to leave us. And staff from HR and the attorney's office should probably stick around. And-
David in the attendee list, if you could please exit the meeting. Otherwise, we're going to have to remove you. Thank you. Okay?
Recording in progress.
Welcome back, Joe.
All right, we are back.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have come out of closed session. The report out of closed session is that the common council directed staff as to the next steps in the council chief of staff selection process. And that will complete item 164. And so I believe that the last item we have is an introduction from the floor for referral of legislative file number 70745 regarding non-competitive purchase of airwalls slash movable partition systems. And President Abbas, can I get a motion on that item?
Move motion to the floor.
Second.
So motion to introduce and refer to the Finance Committee on 411 and the Common Council on 419. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of that introduction? Seeing no objection, that item will be introduced and referred. Are there any other items for introduction from the floor? Seeing none. Are there any other items? Seeing none. Alder Vervier, it's your turn.
Happily move to adjourn.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good rest of your night.